There, okay.
There you go.
Now we're.
Well, you have to turn on the camera as well.
Right to the side of that. Mr. Chair.
There's your camera.
Turn your volume down.
I'm muted, so.
So.
Andy, how's things going over there?
Good.
Yeah?
Going really good, really, really busy, but really, really good.
Busy, huh?
Yes.
Is it John?
Yes.
How do I get out of this?
Oh, you don't want to.
How's he doing?
He's good. He just started eighth grade.
I won't start it.
Uh, no, you're good. Here, let me see. If you go up to the top one, it's our, you're already in.
You've met him.
We're in.
Oh, top bingo.
You guys.
Drag that down a little bit. Just click it.
Hi, room.
And drag it down.
Yeah, he's a good.
And up in that top right corner, it should. Okay, see that, that one right there. There you go.
There we go. All right, Jenny, go.
All right.
There's Jenny.
Yeah, Jenny Nagy Weaver State, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, it doesn't look like anybody's on. Well, somebody from our planning department is.
Oh, here we go.
Okay, let me move this out of the way there. All right. Who's A. Morby? So we now have somebody back on.
All right, so thank you very much for inviting me to come talk and present to you. My name is Jenny Nagy. I am an adjunct professor in the Weber State Economics Department. This is joint work with two of my colleagues in the department, Matt Nagy, who happens to be my husband, and Chris Yentcha, who worked in our department for several years and now is at Bradley University in Illinois. But we decided to take a shot at studying the impact of legalizing accessory dwelling unit rentals on property values in Ogden, Utah. So I'm gonna present this study that we did, which is forthcoming, being published in the Journal of Housing Research, which is a peer-reviewed publication.
So this is brand new then?
This is, this is brand new. There's been an online version that has been published, and the print version will be forthcoming in the coming months. So it's like in an in-between stage. It is like a completed work, yeah. Oh, and I do have some copies of this if you want your own copy. But.
Oh, wait, your screen is not sharing.
It is not, sorry.
You were there. For a while. You were there.
Beginning, so.
There you go.
All right, sorry about that. Um, so, not sure how familiar you are with Ogden, but back in January of 2016, Ogden passed a significant accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And so the goal of this particular study was to find out how did Ogden legalization of ADU rentals in January of 2016 impact property values? I probably don't need to tell you. It's always a good reminder when we're talking about ADUs to remind people exactly what they are. Typically, a small, separate living space that exists within a portion of a single-family home or separate from a single-family home but on the same lot as a single-family home. They go by a lot of different names: mother-in-law suites, guest houses, basement apartments, granny flats, et cetera. So these are some national statistics, but you can do the statistics for Ogden or Weber County. They're basically the same. I should say the data for this paper are entirely pre-pandemic, so I also focus on pre-pandemic trends. And in some ways, that's kind of good because then we, it's not clouded by the very different trend that we've seen in housing prices since the pandemic. Maybe made up different trend, but more exaggerated trend. So all the data from this paper are pre-pandemic, going up through the end of 2019. So from 1988 to 2019, real median home prices, so real prices adjusted for inflation, have been rising faster than real median incomes by about 1% per year. That doesn't sound like much, but when you compound that over 31 years, that means that real home prices have risen faster than incomes by about 35% over that period. And that's not even taking into account these recent trends that we've seen post-pandemic.
Really?
And then real median rents.
It could be as high as 50%.
Oh, yeah.
In fact, I suspect it is.
I, I should have calculated it, but I didn't because I had my pre-pandemic hat on.
Well, we've seen, we've seen some reports recently by the Realtors, wasn't the gauge to talk about the value of housing? How, I know Weber County has gone up like 90%, wasn't it?
Yeah, close to 90%.
And usually those are not adjusted for inflation, and obviously we've had a lot of inflation.
Yeah.
But the, the just like nominal price increases have been on the order of like 25, 30% per year the last two years, I think.
Yeah, last two years.
Anyways, real median rents have also been increasing faster than real incomes. Again, about 20% total over that 31-year period, 1988 to 2019. So again, I don't have to tell you guys that the housing crisis is complicated and multifaceted. But I think it is pretty well documented in the literature that supply constraints, particularly in the form of zoning restrictions, play a significant role in elevated home prices. It's not the only factor, certainly, but it's a significant factor. And then if we look at single-family zoning, that definitely puts a substantial constraint, constraint on the housing supply because you're constrained to building a single home for a single family on a lot as opposed to duplexes, triplexes, or multifamily housing.
Of course, this speaks also to what Andy's talked about in the past on the shortage of affordable housing.
Yes.
I mean, this pushes the, the pressure's always been on it. It makes more pressure. But what it does is it, it hurts, helps, depending on whether you're an owner or renter, the value of that property. And that's what's pushing rents up. And displacing more people.
And so again, to bring things a little bit closer to home, you know, this is just an example of an article from the Salt Lake Tribune dealing with accessory dwelling units. But you don't have to read the paper every day to know that these kind of articles show up in the standard. It's Salt Lake Deseret News. There have been bills on ADUs locally and also at the state legislature every year, the last couple of years. So this is certainly a topic of current discussion within state and local governments in Utah. Really, the one quote that motivated me to really take on this study happened in January of 2021 at a meeting that Andy invited to me. It's the Big Tent Meeting that's organized by the Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce. And Pauline Vong-Govick made the comment, "The public must be provided with concrete data that shows their properties are not going to be negatively impacted by new development or increased density. The majority of people look at their homes as their main asset, which represents their financial stability and security without confidence in ensuring their asset is protected. It will continue to be a difficult challenge promoting a visual and financial campaign showing that this risk is understood and assets will be protected and safety will be maintained as how the public perception and acceptance of ADUs will be secured." So, didn't specifically say ADUs, but it was definitely in the context of ADUs that this was said in the meeting. And then I heard that and I was like, I'm gonna take a crack at trying to see if I can put some, some numbers to what, if anything, is the impact of ADUs on, on property values. So this is my attempt to respond to that comment. So the policy that we study is the 2016 ADU ordinance, which in Ogden, which authorized the rental of accessory dwelling units in most, but not all, single-family zones in Ogden. And I'll show you exactly where, and where and where they were not legalized on the next slide. Ogden's ADU ordinance does require that those renting out ADUs be owner occupants in the other unit on the property. So like most ADU policies, it's different from a duplex in the sense that a duplex, you can rent out both units within ADU. One unit has to be owner occupied. And Ogden's ADU ordinance was passed in January of 2016. So you can look at this map and get a very clear picture of exactly how that ADU ordinance impacted the legality of renting ADUs in Ogden. The map on the left shows Ogden before 2016. The medium and dark gray areas together represent all single-family zoning areas in Ogden. The medium green areas are where ADUs were illegal and there were two pilot zones prior to 2016. The two dark green areas on the left-hand map where ADUs were legal in Ogden. But those are the only areas in Ogden before 2016 where ADUs were illegal. And then after 2016, you see the map on the right. Most, but not all of Ogden's single-family areas changed to dark green. So they went from being illegal to legal. But there are some substantial portions where they remain illegal.
What, what is that section? The upper section where it's not legal, center between the two that are?
Yeah, so to orient you a little bit on the map, yeah.
Further down, right? That, don't keep going.
Keep going down.
That one, right?
Go to the right.
Down, right there.
Right there.
Those, that green area, the lighter green area.
My guess is going to stay around Lake State.
Yes, so.
Yeah.
This little green area, just below it is Weber State. This is Mount Ogden Park.
Okay.
This is what's known in Ogden as the Mount Ogden Planning Community.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. What's the border between those two? As you, as you travel north, between the medium and the green, do you know what street that is?
This one?
No.
Sorry.
Between the dark green and the light green.
Yeah, right.
Oh, I believe it's 26th. And if it's not, it's somewhere very close to 26th. It's one of those half streets, but I'm 99% sure it's 26th Street.
All right, okay.
So.
Your old area, isn't it somewhere?
Yeah, it is. That's, I'm interested, yeah.
Okay. So because.
No.
Because. I'm sorry, sorry. So because the policy legalized the rental of ADUs in most, but not all of Ogden's single-family zones, this policy created what we like to call in economics a natural experiment, right? So what I mean by this is you can kind of divide the areas into a treatment group. Call those the areas where ADUs became legal in 2016. And then a control group would be the areas where ADU rentals remained illegal in 2016, right? So we have a treatment group and we have a control group. And then we were able to get home price data from the Utah MLS and observe home sale prices in both the treatment and the control groups before and after the policy change. So we can observe prices in the treatment area and the control area before and after the policy change. And that allows us to accurately address the question, right? Were housing price trends in treatment areas different from housing price trends in the control areas after the policy change, right? Does the policy have a significant impact on the price trends in those two different areas, the treatment area and the control area? Does that make sense? All right, so that, that's like basically how we're, how we're going about this. And we can look at this two ways. One is just a simple visual of price trends in the treatment group and the control group from 1999 to 2019, which is the period over which we have data. And then we also do a regression, linear regression analysis. And that allows us to control for other factors. So we can control for bedrooms and bathrooms and square footage and et cetera, et cetera, right? So it's not just simple correlation, but it allows us to control for some of those confounding factors. And the spoiler alert, we find no evidence of different trends between treatment and control groups after the policy change. Perfect, all right, to keep going. All right, so before I get in and show the results, just want to talk a little bit about the data. We do get data from the Utah Multiple Listings Service from 1999 to 2019. So we have real home sale prices in addition to some information about the homes that were sold, so square footage, bedrooms, bathrooms, year built, year of sale, days on the market. And we also create a variable for the season of sale to control for seasonal trends in home price sales. We link the MLS data with Ogden City zoning maps, so we're able to geocode the location of each home, so we can assign it to the treatment or the control group. And then we also run our analysis on both the full sample, so that's like a little bit over 15,000 home sales between 1999 and 2019. But when you include all of the homes, there's some worries that, you know, maybe some of the effects that you're picking up are, you know, in Western Ogden, there's been a lot of home construction recently, so maybe the mix of homes is changing over that time period and you don't want to pick that up. So we also do our analysis on a sample of repeat sale homes. So homes where we observe a sale before the policy change and after the policy change.
The same home.
The same home, right? And we restrict the sample to just the homes where we observe at least one sale before and one sale after. And we also conduct our analysis on that subset of properties, which we believe helped. It's just a further step to control for some of those confounding factors that also affect home prices, similar to bedrooms, bathrooms, square footage, et cetera, et cetera. All right. So first, we do the visual analysis. We've got the year of sale on the bottom axis and the real median sale price on the vertical axis. So we've got median sale price by year in the untreated group, which is represented by the black line, and the treated group, which is represented by the red line. So the treated group is the areas where ADUs became legal in 2016. The untreated group, or the black line, is where ADUs remained illegal throughout the entire study period. And I've got a green dotted line. It's a little bit hard to see. In 2016, which was the year of the policy change. And what I see in that graph is no significant change in trends of the treatment group relative to the control group, right? We see similar trends. I'll be at, you know, the, was a gap between the median prices in the treatment and control areas prior to the Great Recession. But then those two groups of hoses, houses kind of had their prices converge during the Great Recession and they stayed pretty much the same, converged throughout the policy change. No noticeable difference in trends after the ADU ordinance.
If anything, what I read there is that the ADU might have affected the value of the property in the positive.
In positive, right.
Because it's actually upside.
And, and what I would just caution you there is that, right? This is a purely descriptive analysis. I don't have any confidence intervals, I, right? And so then when you move on to the regression analysis, I apologize because this is going to be hard to read. So I did include both of these tables. And these are tables from our paper as the last page.
Jenny, you run that time here, so.
All right.
Just so you know.
But when you do run a regression and calculate confidence intervals, you find a very small negative effect, but that's not statistically significant. And we run a couple of different trends with different ways of controlling for a year sold.
Less than 1%.
Less than 1%, yeah. And the same, same conclusion with the, with their repeat sales is that you.
So what you're showing here is basically there was no effect financially in a community because somebody had an ADU.
Because the ADUs were legalized in those particular neighborhoods, right? So I don't have specific data.
We don't know if they were there or not. We just thought that they were legalized, yeah.
Right, right.
All right.
Take into account law enforcement, the number of calls for law enforcement, because people are gonna say, you put somebody in an ADU out back, there's gonna be more police calls and things like that.
This, I think this study just focuses on the property values.
Right.
Well, you know, it's interesting, on stuff like this, many of these ADUs were there anyway and they're illegal. You know, people have illegal apartments in their house all the time.
Did this distinguish between ADUs that are in the house and except that?
No.
Okay.
Probably didn't have that building.
It is not. And in fact, I do not attempt in this study to identify which properties had ADUs or which properties were neighbors of properties that had ADUs. I, purely a policy analysis, looking at, you know, this was before the policy, this was after the policy. Do we notice a difference in property values and effect on property values from the policy? Then our conclusion is that, no, we don't. There is no measurable effect, no statistically significant effect of this policy.
Now, why don't you do the same thing for short-term rentals?
Yeah.
Because you talked about short-term rentals here.
Yes.
So do you think that short-term rentals and ADUs could be compared to each other?
I, it depends on the context, but I think in some ways that they can. I think.
That's what I would say, but I.
Right, like, so during this time period, Ogden technically passed a short-term rental ordinance in December of 2016. But unlike prior to the passage of the ADU ordinance, Ogden City officials were openly saying that prior laws making short-term rentals illegal were not going to be enforced until the city council updated the ordinance. So whereas the ADU ordinance, you know, like, made an illegal market legal, the short-term rental ordinance just sort of served to add additional regulation to what the city was already treating as a legal market. And then the other problem with analyzing the effects of the short-term rental ordinance is that it was citywide, so it doesn't lend itself to this like natural experiment where you have certain neighborhoods where they were legalized and certain neighborhoods where they weren't. And you can't do this sort of treatment and control type of analysis. Now, you could technically think about looking at Ogden City compared to other cities in Weber County, but I think there are some downsides to, to doing that because in a lot of ways, you can argue that that's not a great comparison, right? It's a different school district. It's a different socioeconomic demographic.
I agree with that.
So it's, it's just because the short-term rental ordinance applies citywide, it's harder to do this type of analysis.
I think you can still, so basically what you're saying is that ADUs has not had an impact one way or the other really on values.
Right.
Some people would say that it's increased, other people would say it's decreased. What we're saying is the proof here, at least on your, that really is not, doesn't have that big of an impact.
Right.
Exactly. Right? That's how I see it.
There's no.
And if anything.
No detectable impact.
The, the very small you could see is up, not down.
During that, during what we call a recession.
Right.
You look at that '07, '09, '10, or 10.
Well, yeah, but the ADU is from 2016 on.
Yeah.
Right, well.
2016 on. Yeah, see right there, there is actually a very small difference there, okay?
Right, but then it comes back to the trend, so like overall period.
Right. I agree. I don't think you can really measure that. Oh, that's nifty.
It doesn't make, it makes a lot of difference.
So that policy now, the legislature's made statewide.
So in some way, right, it, it wasn't like, let's take the Ogden ADU ordinance and apply that statewide. The statewide ordinance applies only to internal
Yes.
accessory dwelling units, right? And the state ordinance allows a carve-out of 25% of the single-family zone areas in any city and a carve-out of 67% of single-family zone areas in cities with a university with a student population greater than 10,000, right? So.
67.
Two-thirds.
Yeah, two-thirds.
Yeah. Um, so Ogden clearly hasn't taken, like, is not pushing the boundary of that carve-out because Ogden has accessory dwelling units legalized in about 80 or 85% of its areas zoned as single-family. It's only about 15 and 20% where it's remained that median.
You get outside of Ogden, the, the cities on the west side out here. And most of them will recently have not allowed any duplexes. Well, the ADU from the state, that policy now said, well, you can't stop them. So they can take these split-entry homes and put a door, and they've got a duplex. And they've done that, actually, in many cases. And I know many of the cities have not been happy about it, but that's just why.
Well, and, and you know, if I, I really want to tell you exactly what I would like is I, like, that is another case where it's a great natural experiment, right? You have a 25% carve-out, you have a 75% mandate. Little different in cities that have a big university population, but that would be a great opportunity to study the effect of this kind of policy statewide. But I would need someone from the MLS to be willing to give me the data.
I think you'd probably get that.
Yeah.
MLS.
Multiple listings.
For real estate.
They're real estate.
All right, well, it's pretty nifty. So Andy, what are you gonna do with this information?
Well, ADUs are a great source of affordable housing. They're like the low-hanging fruit of affordable housing. But just like Jenny said, I mean, there are so many, people are so concerned with the traffic and the. The traffic and the criminal activity and the parking and.
Financial aspect.
Sounds like short-term rentals.
But, but people are saying, if my neighbor has an ADU, it's going to decrease my property value. And so this is a study that is. It will be, you know, published in this, in the Journal of Housing, which is a really big deal, so we can. Refer back to this as people come at us with these criticisms of ADUs.
At least we can say, we guarantee it won't hurt you, now we can't guarantee it will help you. But it was trending a little that way.
Yeah.
So you can argue maybe it was helpful.
Well, I think the argument can be made, it's definitely helping for affordable housing.
For sure.
What's it gonna do? You're gonna see rate increases, you're gonna see more homeless population.
Like, right, the conclusion is that provides evidence legalizing ADU rentals. Can increase the supply of affordable housing without. Negative, negatively impacting home values.
Really, that's, that's the impact.
That's right.
How do we provide affordable housing? ADUs are a source of that and it's not gonna take down the value.
It appears that the downside. At least in terms of, it, it appears that at least in Ogden, there has not been a financial downside.
Yeah.
Right.
That's cool.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yeah.
I was super excited.
So you're gonna present this talk?
Um, so I have spoken with some of this, the council members and I've been told they're working on getting me on the agenda. So I, I really hope that I get to present to them, but I'm glad that you guys, like, thank you for making time for this.
That's great, yeah, we appreciate.
That's good information to have for what there was, especially the happiness on the affordable housing panel for WACOM as well, when we start up next year.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Yeah, the WACOM is the place to present this as well.
Yes.
Well, in fact, maybe the entire WACOM everyone here.
That's true.
We could do that in the next month or two.
Give this to the mayor.
Uh, Andy, get this on the agenda in the next month or two.
Yeah, and then she's also going to present to the Commission on Housing Affordability at the state level too.
But we're not, the affordable housing isn't meeting between now and the end of the year.
Right.
And so this would be a good fill-in kind of for that, so it didn't, we didn't lose our focus. Actually, this is way good. Alright Jenny, thank you, we appreciate it. Yeah, we appreciate it. Andy, just open that door and the next group will come in while you guys are shutting down. Good, good, good. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Come on in here.
Hello.
There he is.
How are you guys?
Good, how are you? Gary.
Gentlemen.
There's the ambassador of enthusiasm. Hello, Corlin. All those little short ladies just like.
Does it?
Be way down.
I'm the low rider.
Alright, Snow Basin Development, Sean, this is you.
Thank you. So commissioners, we met with Snow Basin last, well, I guess it's been a week ago Wednesday. About them amending their development agreement to allow. Construction to take place before all of the infrastructure is actually installed at that Club Med site. We're, we're a little bit apart on. Where we are proposing that agreement goes and where Snow Basin is proposing that goes. I don't think we're far apart, but we wanted to bring this back.
When you say where that goes, you're not talking about the physical.
No.
Okay.
You're talking about. Where, where the agreement goes.
Okay. That's okay.
But we wanted to bring this to you to get your thoughts so that we have some direction when we approach Snow Basin again to have this conversation. We, we know we've discussed this previously and you are in favor of us moving down this road to come to an agreement. But we feel like we're at a point now where we need some further direction, policy direction, so that we know how to proceed. So with that, I'll let Steve, Rick and Charlie.
So they're, they're asking that. You guys made me do this last Tuesday.
You threatened, I didn't think you'd really do it.
I went home right after the hearing and did it.
He was clean shaven last week, should've seen, now he's got fun back.
Starting a new one already.
Yep, starting a new one. I gotta have something else to protest, we'll figure out with.
Okay, go ahead.
We met with you guys, I think, back in March before they submitted this development agreement amendment to make sure that you thought it would work out. Basically, that agreement is going to say Snow Basin is exempt from certain subdivision requirements. Specifically installing all the subdivision infrastructure, particularly water and sewer, before they can plat and start building. Now, we're getting into the specifics of that agreement and they're saying, we would like it to be occupancy. Please let us get to occupancy before we have to have sewer and water installed. And that's what we wanted to take to you today, we want to find out your thoughts about it, it's, I don't think really any of us are super comfortable with that.
That's from, we went from there to there, now that's from there to there.
Yes.
I mean, that's.
Yes, so this is all about Club Med.
Yeah, the reason for that is they're saying it's almost a no-go for Club Med or anyone to start building. If they know, if they get all their contractors on site and they get all this money for the project and then all of a sudden a four-way. They've got to stop, the contractors leave the site and it just becomes a financial nightmare for whoever's building this and. They say it's a no-go for them.
And, and the reason they said that is because we brought, we thought that that's what your, your, your advice to us was.
I think it was.
Yeah, we were comfortable with them getting the four-way, so as we're writing the language, I'm thinking, well, let's write four-way and they're here and they're saying, whoa. Four-way is kind of scaring some people, so.
I think it was four-way.
Yeah.
That's my recollection, so we wrote it down.
Yeah, it wasn't occupancy.
No. You know, for them to get sewer in there, that's a pretty big deal, I mean sewer's a long ways away, I suspect that'll take a year.
They're still not even, still not even annexed into the district up there, they're working on it, right, but, but that's not a overnight process.
What they're saying is it's gonna take a year or two to get sewer there and then they start building, it'll take another year or two.
And with the winter season, there, it's limited on construction.
Yeah, you know.
Sewer's a big hold-up here.
Yeah, it is. I did a project like this in Jackson. And I have to agree. During the winter, everything that is physically outside the building just stops. You know, they put parking underneath, so the parking underneath really ended up being the entire construction site. Because everybody went underneath to warehouse the plumbing supplies and the electrical and all the subs. And then they worked up from there.
Yeah.
And outside the building, nothing happened, it was just froze over and. So I can kind of see that here. At least on the flatland, we can work during the summer or winter, they've figured it out. But when you get up there where the frost is six and seven feet deep and then when you open a structure. You know, within days, the frost is two and three feet in there and is going in daily. That's a little tougher to do.
You may recall our current ordinance requires that those improvements be before they pull a building from it. And we're putting it at the other end of the spectrum, where they're wanting to.
Yeah, occupancy. Corlin, have we gotten, we getting into areas here we shouldn't be getting into?
Well, it would be a very, well, variance is the right word to departure from what your ordinance requires. So, not like we have to worry about anything here, I mean, they can't operate without a sewer, so, I mean.
That's the other part of this. If we're concerned that they're going to stop building and we end up with a shell of a hotel up there.
Right.
I guess that's one thing to consider, because it's happened at Powder Mountain in the past, but.
Yeah, but Powder Mountain, it was just a foundation and they didn't even pour the slab, it was just a foundation. No, it was foundation and then they had some plumbing because they had the.
I saw, right.
So Basin understands that, they're willing to do some type of like a reclamation bond or, or write that into the agreement that they have to give us so, so many dollars before they can start. So in case that happens, we can cover it up or take, take out the foundation.
See, I feel a little bit better about that because then at least we could go to the public or the next guy that wants this and say, unargued. We had ourselves protected because we, we, we required a finish bond on it or reclamation bond or whatever you want to call it. And so we had some guarantee there and that's what we didn't have at Powder Mountain, right? So it sat. I don't know, what do you think about that?
Well, yeah, originally I was not thinking, you know, but I understand the elevation there is different. And, and I was, I was gonna bring up, if, if they're willing to put some type of financial obligation bond up. That, that would be complete, but they can't open without sewer.
That's right, they just can't.
They're not gonna open without sewer and I agree, their, their timeframe for putting that sewer, it's not like they're down here in Ogden City. You know, probably after first of December, mid-December, it's latest through mid-March, they're done.
Yeah.
There are no.
I agree.
Maybe before.
Maybe April.
So maybe April. With that being said, I'm, you know, with some type of bond obligation. That we know that we're secure, so if anybody else approaches, we say, here's the case history, we've got some history to support us, I'm probably okay with it.
And we are getting a, once that goes in, that'll be a huge tax incentive that will benefit the county.
Right.
And I really have a hard time thinking that Snow Basin is going to leave a vacant building up there with everything they have invested.
Yeah.
In that resource.
I agree with that. Arv, what do you think about this? You okay with that?
I'm moving a little on it, if, I like the idea of a bond though.
I do too, I think that's the thing that sells from here, Steve, you wrote the right thing there.
Sure, just back to your question, the precedent issue is more of a political one than a legal one.
Right.
And the development agreement process is intended, you know, under state law. To allow variations from the local ordinances, so it is a possibility, I mean, as long as you adopt it legislatively. You're okay to depart from the current ordinance, but yeah, it's more.
When you say adopt it, you're talking about adopting the development agreement.
Amending the development.
Oh yeah, amending it.
I'll let you know where we're at on that.
And that's per parcel, so it's this parcel.
It would be with Snow Basin.
Yeah.
And we could say it is on this one project.
That's what I'd like.
Yeah, I'm probably okay with that too.
Well, I'm like, what we're talking about here is Club Med, we understand kind of the dynamics there, I've got full faith in Snow Basin following through on this, so. But, but I don't, again, I don't think we give them carte blanche across their entire development to come back to us and say, well, you approved it here. Now you have to prove it for this new.
Once we get to that point, sewer is on the property and I suspect they're just gonna hook to the main line of the trunk going out to the. Sewer lagoons.
Yeah.
So, everything will become part of this at that point.
Yeah, so one other issue, if we tie it specifically to Club Med, they're saying they may have another development that comes online before. Club Med finishes, that they are doing themselves.
Oh.
And so it would apply to that instead of Club Med and at that point the sewer's in place. Do you care if it's the first development or do you want to specifically call it Club Med or whatever else?
The, the first development's gonna drive the sewer, yeah, so. Where's the first develop, whatever the first development, whether that's Club Med or Club X, I don't care.
So is this sewer gonna connect to the, their main sewer line and which will bring everything on or they bring in one around the hill to Club Med?
No, this, this will be the main line, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but this comes up Trappers, Luke Road.
We haven't seen the plans on that yet, but the intent is it's gonna follow Trappers. It'll come up and it'll basically intersect the line that's feeding into those ponds and just take it down the mountain.
Makes sense.
Okay, that makes sense.
Now, again, I haven't seen plans, but that's kind of what's been described to us at this point.
Alright, you, you've got three okay's here.
It's all downhill from there.
So you're gonna give us a finished product?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're just agreeing in principle here.
Do you need any other clarification?
No, just I'll let you know, we had this, we took this to the planning commission public hearing last week, earlier this month. The second, I think it was, there was a five to two vote, five yes, two no. The two no were precedents, they didn't like the idea of allowing the special exception.
Well, we struggled with it too, that's why we require the bond.
Right.
Alright.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I think you did, this is good then.
Good.
Makes me happy.
Okay.
So. Charlie?
Yes.
Any kick, any pushback since our hearing and adoption?
Nope, I've got a few people asking when the map survey is gonna be published so that they can start submitting for rezones.
Really?
I've had four different developers inquiring about rezones, I let them know that, you know. Unless it's a big project that already checks all the boxes of the plan, it might get a little bit of static trying to get it through the process. But if they can, if every single one of them checks all the boxes.
A week, it all took a week.
Yeah.
There was people waiting on that.
Yeah, well, we figured, there were people waiting.
No, I knew there was people waiting.
Fire, there's one guy who actually submitted his application well before the adoption and so he's gonna be wondering where his approval is pretty quickly and. He's, he's, I think he's a far cry away from what the plan actually says, so, we'll, we'll work with him on it.
Happy day. Well, the day we held that hearing, of all the people that were there, it was Upper Valley they worried about, not the Lower Valley.
Yeah, we didn't have anything on the lower side.
I'm really happy the way that turned out. I think, I like to think I never say this, but in this case, I think you've hit a frickin' homerun. Well, I just do, I mean, I'm a little surprised.
Which part didn't you think you would say, that there'd be a homerun or that?
I anticipated much more pushback on this, I just did. And I thought, well, we're just wearing them down, but surely it's the final, final hearing will have a big group come in, but we just didn't. I'm a little surprised by all that.
They're all gonna show up when there's a big development proposed in their backyard, just like the folks from the Upper Valley did on.
They'll still have the opportunity to come out.
They will, but I'm not sure they'll even, I mean, people out there have now got to the point where they're accepting development. I believe, that's my opinion.
I agree.
And if it gets to that point, starts driving another incorporation discussion and pretty soon.
Happy day.
Off it goes.
Off it goes, and the day that happens, they'll have a very strong foundation for that. Hey, there we go, I'm very happy with that. Good, good, good.
Tomorrow, the water and sewer meeting joint with.
Yeah, what time is that?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
And we'll have some.
Is that here or downstairs?
Downstairs.
So I said, yeah, this weekend I went to St. George alone. So I took some of that reading material with me and I actually sat down and read that plan. And I got a few questions on it, but all in all. You know, this is a big deal for the valley.
It is.
Yeah, and when you read that sewer plan, you get towards the end of it, I think it was. Alter, alternate number six, the docs, how you physically gonna do this?
The water or the sewer?
Sewer. And, oh no, the water, it was water.
Yeah.
And you know, we really need to sit down and talk about that as a group, because when you get into that. It talks about the fact that we, we've got to appoint somebody to do this and that you have to talk about bonds and how we're gonna do it. I don't think you probably ought to do it while I'm here, but in the next year or two, if you guys decide to do that, it's time.
It's time to do it.
Yeah.
So commissioners, the public are really latching on to the statement that was made in one of the presentations that says. Unless the commissioners are willing to do this, then no, then they should seriously consider limiting development in the valley.
And want a moratorium.
Yeah, more, and that's where the whole idea about moratorium is coming from.
Yeah.
I don't think a lot of folks realize that that study doesn't say no new wells. That study says that it doesn't make a lot of sense to drill a public well.
Right.
And suck the groundwater out of a public well that you would otherwise suck out.
The guys didn't present that very well.
If you throw down a whole bunch of individual wells or small community wells all over the place, you're gonna be diversifying where it's being sucked out of. That cone of depression changes and you're not, you're not void, creating void space where water.
That option three talked about building, drilling new wells and it was over kind of by the Brownie Ranch area, up in there, middle four. And, but you know, I was a little surprised when it comes right down to the dollars of all that. The treatment facility out of the South Fork, that one over. And that appears to be probably the. And that appears to be probably the way that should go.
Makes the most sense.
Yeah.
When you say one over, you mean over the.
Financially.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it was.
Reason it went over the drilling of the well is just because of the effect that that well would have on August City Wells.
Yeah, they were expecting a huge pushback legally.
Possibly.
Which could result in probably.
But even financially at one old. So in my mind, the fact that it was cheaper to go the other way makes it probably the best way to go. And. It would relieve pressure on the aquifer long term because as these wells fail, people will just connect. And it goes away. That appears to be the long-term future of the valley.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but the important part to recognize is. The study, when they talk about a well was a main source public well like Oregon City well.
Right.
And it doesn't have doesn't have anything to do with. If we've got forty fifty people up there that want to drill individual wells over the next year. And they've got we've remained water rights, they're gonna drill them.
The state gives approval.
Like Commissioner Harvey said, we're not the water authority. No. But I was putting it in the paper, but you know, to say, okay, we should place a moratorium on any well building or any well drilling. Right now because of that study is. Well, we can't do it.
Yeah, we can't.
Even if we wanted to, which we don't, we can't.
And you look at how much water is being released from the reservoir to serve downhill.
Yeah.
Water right owners.
Right.
Uh, if if Romney's plan for the lake and for water in this area, you know, follows through and there's money or. Uh, appropriated for that. Bring water to the lower valley. I mean, as as much water as you bring to the lower valley as you can, the less you're gonna need to release out of that reservoir.
Yeah.
But it's just a matter of reapportioning the the property.
It's said in that study several places. That there was plenty of water in the Upper Valley, in the basin. There's plenty of water there.
All right, it's just a matter of allocations.
Yeah.
How much do you, how much do you let out? How much do you? Drill or? Take out of the South Fork or put some additional storage tanks. So it's all it's all about how.
All right, that was great. I think we're ready for that study. As you walk out, I told.
Now they're gonna talk about tomorrow, right? Hey, Charlie?
Yeah.
That protection zone out west.
Talking about how we would physically finance that water district.
We have to.
And in the next little while, it's time to have that conversation, really, how we're physically gonna do that. I probably won't be able to hold on it, but you know. Well, yeah, we ought to be having that discussion and. You know, it's a sixty million dollar. Deal.
Did you go to friends?
There's a place.
Hey, friends back.
Uh, we went to.
Boy, look who's there.
Where are you?
Good.
Oh, yeah. That especially my middle one.
All right.
Is it really?
This is a discussion. Uh, regarding. Taylor West Weaver Secondary Water. Who scheduled this? Hey, look at what we got right down there. Holy mackerel.
You know, I'm actually excited about this.
You better change that caffeinated.
You're gonna want me amped down.
That's right.
Oh, here we go.
All right, Gary, go ahead.
There's kind of two parts to this discussion, commissioners. I'll hit the first part quick. Uh, the first part is we requested, we received a request from Heritage Home Builders. Uh, to allow them to push forward with building permits in the barn subdivision.
Is this the one we did a long time ago and we did?
So the barn is out there by the we elementary in West Weaver, just north of 12th Street, east of Forty Seventh, kind of nestled up there in that area there.
I wish, who's the, who who's who's the?
The developer is Brad Blanch and then he's partnered uh through some sort of agreement.
Get all these love letters from Brad Blanch. Nice.
We get a lot of a lot of emails from Brad.
That that looked like a figure eight out there, long-term planning on that. They wanted to build the bottom part of that figure eight. And that that went from the pond all the way down to the elementary school and into the subdivision.
Well, are you confusing River Bend with the barn?
I didn't think I was, am I?
So River Bend is over east on thirty-six hundred West.
Yeah, but when you talked about this development being by the elementary school.
Directly west of it.
Right. But that line went all the way along the bottom.
Thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Sorry, I I was thinking something. You're correct. So so Heritage has requested. For us to allow them to move forward with building permits. Knowing that the secondary water is not complete and it's not built. Now. Initially, we received this request and. I don't know how much I can say nicely, but I'll just get right to the point. Our experience. We with our experience, we were a little hesitant to allow Heritage to move forward until the infrastructure is done, complete and functionally in place. So when we received this request, we cut, we gave Ryan Rogers a call. Uh, to kind of have this discussion and our initial feeling was. Mine and Chad, we would recommend to not move forward with building permits until there is a functional. Operational secondary water system in place for this.
Didn't we give them?
On for this.
Wasn't on this one?
No. Plus, this one didn't qualify, did it?
But we did on another deal.
You're thinking of the Hooper portion.
Correct.
That was the Hooper where they were gonna build a pond. Hooper irrigation is gonna build a pond.
Secondary did not qualify.
Yeah, didn't qualify. This was it. And I really wanted it. This was one of my main ones that I wanted and didn't qualify. And it wasn't that it wasn't.
Didn't qualify, didn't qualify.
Well, yeah. In fact, it wasn't even, uh, from our attorney's point of view. We couldn't even scab this around and put it in there anyway because it wasn't even in. The. When you say it didn't qualify, it wasn't even a part of it. There was no way we could make this work.
That's right.
Yeah. If there was any way we could make it work, I'd have been trying to do it, but this is. Yeah.
Yeah. We had that discussion.
Yeah.
So so we've got. Potential of about twenty-five. Building permits to be requested for the barn subdivision.
Then tell them about the Meadows while you're at that.
Correct, thank you.
Well, the barn is west of the element.
West of the elementary.
I got it.
Now, if you go south across the road from the barn and east.
South across the road.
South across and east to the east, maybe a half a mile east. There is a. Kind of a satellite subdivision that has plans to have secondary water served from the service that will go to the bar. Does that make sense? So it's kind of an extension of that secondary water.
And if you go south across the street. From an almost just little kitty corner from the elementary, there's actually a subdivision going in there.
Same one, same one.
Last west, not east.
Pull that up, Sean or somebody.
Yeah. Yeah, east of the barn. I think we're talking the same one. Tucker's gonna.
Although the difference here is. Fricking couple of yards. I mean, we're not talking the difference.
It's basically an extension of the secondary water system to service the barn and this other subdivision called the Meadows. Right? Is that fair explanation of it? Now. Initially, when the barn was approved. There was a last minute change on how secondary water would be served. And ultimately, through. A few different iterations, we arrived where we're at today. Where we're at today is we now have an escrow in place from Terraki Farms for the secondary water to the bar. Okay, that escrow was placed and an agreement was signed in May of this year. For that escrow, albeit the subdivision escrow was placed a little earlier.
The secondary water. One that Brad just pulled out, said I I'm officially taking this out. That's not this one, is it?
This would be one of those.
Isn't?
Yeah, phase two is what he's talking about. But this is phase one that's already recorded that we're talking about.
Okay, so no problem with this.
That cluster of lots is the barn.
Right there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then that little cul-de-sac is the Meadows.
Right.
So we'll just call them the barn and the Meadows.
You know, years ago, hold on a minute. Six years ago. That little thing called the Meadows was gonna be a park. He was gonna donate that to be a park.
Interesting.
It's still in there. Part of that's still in there. He's he's committed to five acres.
At one point, there was discussion of that, but it ended up being excluded.
A community park.
From the PRUD.
There's been some discussion with the barn.
That's right.
Right.
It's still here, bud. That's not all the way.
I specifically remember this. This was before your time with all due respect. That area there was gonna be a park. I remember because it was so close to the school. And it was, it's about two or three acres in there.
Where the Meadows is?
Yeah.
It's probably bigger.
Thirteen, I think twelve or thirteen lots.
Yeah.
How many?
I think it was eight when we approved it.
There's, well, those big lots.
Pretty good size.
Probably nine.
All right.
Bigger picture, so we're suggesting, sorry, did that cut you off, Commissioner Harvey?
No, but it's just interesting and you you can say what you want here, but I made decisions back then based on that being a park. That's all I'm, that's all I'm representing here.
Okay.
And so the whole bigger picture, we're gonna do this, we're gonna donate this for a park and put it in the park district and. This would have been in two thousand seventeen, in about May or June, April, May, ju- of two thousand seventeen?
You are correct. They came with one proposal with Terraki Barn. That had Meadows attached with it, but we came back and said you can't do the PRUD because they have to be contiguous. Um, they did have one proposal that came in with a park area down there.
It was a part of a commission meeting.
Yeah, but because it wasn't contiguous.
Okay.
Do that.
All right.
So. Things started moving forward with the Meadows quicker than the barn. Okay. Building permits were issued for the Meadows. Homes have been began construction. All banking on the completion of the secondary water system that would serve not only the barn, but the Meadows. Did I miss anything there or represent it wrongly?
I just stacked on top of that that we've collected a letter from those that are building in the Meadows.
Yeah.
That they will not get occupancy. Uh, and we won't issue final approval. Without having a. System in place, so we're. What what we're worried about is, you know, and it doesn't matter if it's. In November, December, or whenever, but. We wanna see that the secondary system's in place and functional. Based on the record that's been, the track record that's been going on. We wanna make sure that that's in place before, because that's the only thing we have left to to hang on to the development.
So is that why you're here today to talk about that?
Yeah.
So we were at a meeting of your board prior to your board here a while back. Whatever happened is a result of that.
So Hooper and Brad's been back and forth. Um, I spoke with Rex Hancock, Vice President of Hooper this morning, just to kind of get a a true statement from him because. I've gotten some other statements from Brad and I just wanted to get the facts before I met with you, so. Their board approved, Hooper Irrigation's board was on board with it. Um, Brad did put in for a point of diversion change on the river, moving his river water. Up to Hooper's, to pull it down the canal. Um, Hooper's attorney had drafted an agreement. Brad didn't like it. Brad wanted his attorney to draft an agreement. And Rex told me that he hadn't got that. He did get a a letter from Brad. But right now, there is nothing signed. They're not moving forward with anything as far as that goes.
But as far as. Actually, Brad's the developer now.
He still holds control of the secondary somehow through this agreement.
Okay, but but. The their intention is for this to be served, that's still gonna happen.
Hooper's on board with it as long as they can come to a an agreement and an understanding, but in the conversation they had with Brad on Wednesday of last week. Brad's intention is not that.
So what's Brad gonna do there?
I don't know. He he ran three options past me and. You know, one one option was he wanted to do a point of diversion change into Taylor West Weaver well. And then that would just, that we would supply him culinary to use outside, which isn't an option on our. You know, I I shouldn't say that. I mean, it it's gotta go back to my board to make. It's probably not gonna go that way.
No.
Um, the other option was is he wants to put. The river water still in. Hooper's Canal. And then flow it down and build a pond and do his own. And he said, yeah, then he's also put in for another application to drill another well. And pump out of the ground with that too, so. I don't.
We have a well. You can see where our tank is right there. We have a well there, so we'll be.
We would protest any any deep wells getting drilled in the area just.
Yeah, where he wanted to drill.
He would drill over on his property somewhere over there by the by where the barn is on the western face.
Probably right there.
We wouldn't want it. The last time he put.
So why is things brought down between Brad and you guys?
It's not between us. I mean, we're we're sticking to the grounds of he's got a half secondary wall. You know, that's been, that's Taylor West Weaver, Taylor West Weaver standpoint.
Okay, then why is it brought down between him and them?
Him and Hooper? You mean? I don't know.
I I received an email from him today, which stated in that email, he. Hooper approached him saying there would be kind of a six hundred thousand dollar initial connection fee. That. He felt was exorbitant and higher than it needed to be. He didn't go into a lot of details as to why that number was derived and how it was derived, but. Basically, in his opinion, it was off the table to do the Hooper connection.
So Ho- Hooper's gone. In his.
As the challenge commissioner is. Yeah, as of today, this morning, or I guess it was last night when I received the email, like eight o'clock last night, it's off the table, okay?
The second, so I mean, we still have the viable option, which it was based on the approvals of him running up to. Uh, 12th Street and tying into Weaver Basin.
Right.
But the we've, Ryan's done some research on that and that's kind of falling apart because there's some funds that's gotta be moved and some stuff. For that, not just of the construction, but for the actual water itself. So.
Doesn't surprise me.
So there's there's issues there, so now is it Mountain Irrigation who that's drew is. Just about to say, we don't want to deal with it either because money's owed and it's not been.
So the Weaver Basin. Concept we talked about the other day is off, pretty much off the table too.
If he doesn't pay his fees to Mountain Irrigation, Mountain Irrigation's saying, you're delinquent on your fees. Therefore, we're gonna pull.
Sure.
Our contract and.
Well, that's what we talked about. Yeah, that that sounded to me like that was a year-to-year.
Yeah, it's a year-to-year thing.
It is. Just like. Contract.
Yeah.
And. I don't think a year-to-year contract's gonna work for secondary water.
No. No, well, for for Taylor West Weaver standpoint, no, because it's not, it's not a long-term viable.
Yeah.
Situation, so we would really love to see Hooker work. We are a hundred percent in favor of making Hooker work. But the problem is, I, I think what Gary called the meeting is, is, here's the problem. The barn wants building permits. We all say no. The meadows are building homes, but we don't wanna issue occupancy because there's no water there. Cause they haven't met, the, the developer hasn't met the requirements of, of the agreements. So, how do we go at this kind of, in a, in a uniform deal to say, no, you can't build it, no, you can't.
So what are these guys using for secondary?
It's supposed to come from the barn.
It will all be supplied from what Brad.
Oh, it's all gonna, this is all tied under one ball here.
That's right. It's just an extended straw.
Have you got, have you got, uh, homes being built there?
Yes.
Here's a big overview.
There's ten homes, Commissioner Jenkins, that are being built right now.
That's the connection for the Weber Basin that comes in, feeds that, and then it's supposed to come down and feed down as well.
But those ten homes being built, they're under the, these, these builders and the, these lot owners are banking that in three months, the escrow is gonna be It's gonna be time to draw the escrow and the county take over the escrow and finish, finish it up. So, these, these ten lots in here.
Ten or twelve?
Well, twelve lots, ten, ten of them are building on right hand.
That's in the meadows.
Yeah, so there, there, there's an escrow that says they, that was dated in May.
That's right.
Of this year.
That's right.
It says they have six months to, to have the secondary completed. The secondary's not completed, that escrow can be taken and used to develop the secondary. And, and those
So look.
Lot owners all know that.
But the problem.
This gets real simple right now in my mind. Randy Marriott's the only one here that can do this. Nobody else can. And he's only two or three blocks away. So why wouldn't we go with Western Irrigation?
The problem that, that, I mean, if, if that's the option, that's what Taylor West Weaver agreed to for them. So it's an option that can work if that's, I mean, that's the direction where the, the water.
Not what I want.
Well, that's the way it was approved as well.
So that was, when it got approved from planning and, and the commission.
Using, using Randy's water?
Using Randy's water.
That's right.
Now, here's an option as well. He gets connected to Randy. And then Hooker comes along and hooks it all up. We need, we need a connection in our master plan. We, we need a connection on Twelfth Street. So, when it, when it was up, when it's all done, we, we could buy. We, we could buy that connection and hook it to our system and then they can take Hooker over.
Well, yeah, that's. They make this, let's see, four forty-seven, yeah, right, if they make that connection right there, which is where Randy is, I'll pull it here and connect on that corner, then when this develops and comes back, you could buy that connection over and just take it over. Yeah, that actually proves the way to go.
But, we've gotta make sure, he's gotta get a thing settled with Randy to make sure that that connection's gonna work.
Yeah. They gotta pay their bill. Didn't you say that's what this was about?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, why we're meeting is more about issuing permits and, and how to move forward with that.
Gary, is that what he said in the email? That that was the plan?
His email, I believe, stated that he was gonna tie in his own pond and his own system in on his property.
So he wants to go back, so in, in Frontier and in one set of plans, there's a full-blown secondary system there. But now you got Hooker saying, you don't own any rights to this connect. And so we're not gonna flow your water through our canal to fill your pond to supply your deal.
And right now, that's Brad's preferred option, is to use their canal to move his water from a new diversion point through their canal into a pond that's located, that he has a plan to put in on the north.
But if I was the irrigation company and those canals, you know, you generally get a ditch full of water and you're you know, you're, you're sending it out to people and you turn that ditch off and on. Uh, you don't have excess, it's not like they built extra capacity in that ditch for somebody out there, I mean, they'll build it for the amount of property that's in that area that they serve.
It's all been used up, right?
It's all work, but Brad sold his rights off that, so he had water shares and rights, that I think if I remember, it had like twenty-seven tied with this. Something like that.
He sold them?
He sold them, so he doesn't own any rights in the canal anymore, so.
Winston Park now has the water rights.
So it's really the ones that are on that development up there.
Well, Winston Park's south.
If someone from the barn comes to you guys for like a will serve letter for a building permit, you would, you wouldn't give them one?
That, we came and met with Commissioner Ford last weekend. What's, what's hard for us and our, and I'm sure it's the same for these guys is we get these people coming in, they want building permits and they're hounding us and it's our fault. We, we want a little bit of backup from our, our board and.
Well, we, we want, I mean, we don't feel that the water district's a hundred percent fault, you know, why this is at this state. It's, it's really none of our fault, but we're dealing with the developer that's not getting their things done. But, like the people in the meadows, they bought lots, they're building homes now. And we're gonna go in and say no, you know, but they, they fully understood and signed an agreement that says, you know, we understand, but they also understand that, you know, something's supposed to have happened in the last six months.
It's not their fault.
It's not, and.
But they'll come to us, they'll come to us again and say, yeah.
Yes, so Bren, you're thinking rather than get to where we're getting at the meadow?
Nothing in the barn, nothing, Taylor West Weaver will not sign off on another building.
Which, to be clear, that's exactly where Chad and I are at.
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't feel anything in the barn is a good point, good, good idea to move forward with at this point.
I agree with that.
The problem we're gonna have is in four to five months, when all those homes in the meadows are ready for people to move in.
Yep.
They're not gonna get their C of O because they signed this agreement that was kinda filed in conjunction with Taylor West Weaver saying, we realize we won't get this if there's no, no secondary, and there's no secondary.
But that's not our fault.
You're correct.
So here's, here's a, here's where, I'm tired, and I explained to these guys of us being the mitigators or the judges between the developer and these lot owners. Okay, we've got certain speci- specifications that need to be complete before they do it. These guys have their specifications. Let's quit trying to bail out the developer or be the good guy to these. This is a fight between the developer and these landlords. It's not between us. We've got our set of rules. I'm tired of making these adjustments and then having them come back on us. Because, you know, it either puts a pressure on them to give the will serve and hook them up, or it puts a pressure on us to change in ornaments or change some type of development.
Yeah, and now they've got all their construction loans and everything else, they're still.
They'll be paying on them, but we're the bad guy.
Yeah.
If we don't do it, but, but we're the bad guy because the developer has not fulfilled his obligation. I remember when Brad Blanch came in here and said, this has been, what, two years ago? On the second, and I'm gonna do this pond to blah, blah, blah. Well, guess what? It hasn't happened.
We need to come up with a fee structure, something like if a developer doesn't do, who said fifty, hundred, thousand dollars, something like that. Make it sting real good.
So I think the new, there's a new provision in the subdivision code that changed since he developed these.
Yeah.
But I'm pretty sure it says you, you even have to have your secondary before we'll give you a building permit.
Yeah. Um, so that wasn't in existence when he.
Correct. This is all under old codes.
That's right, that got changed in the water.
So, I think that'll help a little bit.
Shouldn't run into this situation.
That will help, okay, good. I'm glad to hear that.
But it's mitigating our, we're.
Are any of these homes passed the four-way?
I think so, they're getting real close, but.
I wonder if we should stop them all to four-way. Yeah, we're still gonna have that same issue then with active construction.
Doesn't matter. I'd rather have a guy have a loan out for X instead of X times two, or three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we oughta stop them at the four-way. Well, put the pressure on them right now. And then would ra- I'd rather fight the battle now and then have these people all organized and start going after.
I guess, go ahead. I think that's a good, good idea, but one thing that I think that we could do today to help start this process for them landowners in there is, if we go into, like we talked the other day, if we put a letter together that we can send out jointly from Taylor West River Water and you guys at the commission and send to these landowners and say, look, this is what, where, where you're headed. If you continue to build, this is the, you know, the direction it's going. So hopefully then it'll get them on board to go back to their, who they bought it from and then developer and stuff like that, so that they can start putting the pressure.
True, but what ends up happening here, I, I've done kind of with gauge on this loop. Everybody ultimately looks to the prevailing, uh, jurisdiction authority, and we're there right now. And, uh, uh, we've allowed them to build and everybody was going along based on this, and they finally reached the point where, uh, we don't know where they're going, and they don't know where they're going. They openly admit it. So, for us to go to Brad Blanch and say, look, you know, basically, we're gonna pull, we're gonna put a stop on all this in sixty days if you don't have it solved, or, uh, thirty days or whatever.
One of your points is not so like the meadows, it's down one by Alan Karas. Cause he bought it from Brad and Heritage just bought the, yeah, so it's it, it's an even bigger mess, cause you're going to the developer, but Brad held on to the rights for the secondary water in these developments, both here and down at the river. He might have sold the development, but he is the provider for secondary water. As part of the agreement, so it's, it's just an even bigger can of worms.
So here's, first case scenario, they continue building. They, they want occupancy.
Yeah, spring will come and all, one will move in.
They move into their house. It's not a health safety, or it's not by safety issue, they've got culinary water. So we say, you do not put a yard in. Zero landscaping goes in until this is taken care of. That way they're moved into their house, we avoid that whole issue of construction loans and all of that. But the landscaping somehow becomes the issue.
The problem is then, then we're the, because they move in, they want their kids. They want their kids to go out and play in the grass, or their dogs to be able to go out in the grass and come back in with out tracking muddy, and then they, they hook to us. There's possibility of cross-connection and other things, and then we're, we're back to the bad guy. We gotta make the mud out for the bad guy and.
Do you want a development without landscaping in?
No, you, you don't, but I mean, that, that's what.
But it does.
That's the way you solve. That, that does relieve the pressure from tender construction.
There is another way to solve it.
He throws it back in your court. Now, you're the enforcer. You're the one that's gonna go out there and see the cross-connection or somebody.
That's what's happened at the Carol. I, I bring up the Carol and I go back down that rabbit hole, but it's happened before. And we want, we don't want it to get to that.
Right, yeah.
And so we wanna have.
Now, everybody told me this, the Carol's working, no problem.
Not. I'll call Randy right now. Randy, your demo will tell you it's not working.
Well, we'll invite Carol, uh.
Pat Burns.
Pat Burns, it's not. I drive, we drove in there. Who was I with? Was I with you? I was with somebody. We drove in there and out and looked at it and yeah, and it said everything's working in here now.
Well, that might be Pat. Knock on all their doors.
Vote for secondary water.
So we've even, Commissioner, we've even had complaints to us, which we've called back to Pat. And they had water shortages filling the pond at the beginning of the year and they have problems if too many people water on one side of the road. At the same day, it's, it, it doesn't functionally work and it, it's just been a challenge all the way, ever, ever since.
That's why, that's why we wanna pressurize secondary water system with fifty pounds available each home.
Maybe what we need to do is write him a letter and say, look, as of today, if, when you, uh, in order for us to, like, give you an occupancy permit, uh, you're gonna have to guarantee to us you'll zero-state all your property.
To Sean's point, I mean, I agree, cause I don't wanna see these people sitting like that, but if we give them occupants, we've lost all teeth. I don't think we can give them occupancy without circumventing our own code.
Yeah, that's our issue.
Right, and that's the problem.
There you go. Well, you know, I've seen some of these subdivisions without lawns in them.
Oh, I agree. We should be pushing more of that.
I can say, west, west of the, uh, uh, sewer plant out there, that road, that subdivision that went in there, there's no lawns in there, or hardly any, and it looks terrible. That one out by the sewer, Plain City Sewer Lagoons out there.
Yeah.
There's those, uh, uh, there's almost no lawns in there. It's just a dust bowl. You get in there and they got horses, there's dust everywhere, and it's terrible.
So Liam, I guess the question is, can we stop them at four-way? Do we have the authority to do that?
I, I, that is the question, because we, in our own discretion, I think we could, if we can justify it. Per ordinance and code, it's much easier to do an occupancy. It's clear. All the improvements have to be either installed or guaranteed for occupancy. But prior to that, I mean, we just have to back it up with some good reasons, cause the ordinance isn't as clear on that as it is on.
Yeah.
Your problem with what you just said is guaranteed. We've got a guarantee. We've got the funds.
Well, if we have the guarantee then, then there goes our whole holding of occupancy, the same guarantee.
That, that's my concern.
Yep.
When you say we've got a guarantee, you've got those funds?
No, you, the county holds those funds. We hold the funds.
Then it puts us in the exact same bill with, that I just met with you on. Right there, where the developer wants to just say, well, okay, just go ahead and finish that, would you? And it's like, oh, we don't even know if, if the funds are gonna cover it.
Yeah. Do this, we don't know.
We're not in that business.
Well, and that's the, that's the downfall of this, is if he don't pay Randy, the rest of the funds, Randy's not gonna turn the water on. We can lay the line and make the connection, but there's no flowing water and that, that remaining dollar amount isn't in this. This is for, for infrastructure, not for that fee.
That's put in pipe.
Exactly.
And it has to do with water.
That's, that's it right there, exactly, Commissioner. We can put in all the pipe we want, but if Brad says, I'm not giving you water.
Yeah, run all the pipe you want, but guess what? Somebody's gonna have to pay for water.
And it's, it's bad either way, cause we could take this money here and pipe it towards Hooker.
Yeah.
But there's no water rights to put in, for Hooker to put in there and supply more.
And, and keep in mind, this agree we have, agreement we have, Bren, was planned on taking the pipe back towards Twelfth Street.
Yes, yes, I, I agree.
So, so to switch horses at this point and go easterly towards Hooker, like we all would rather see happen.
There might not be enough.
No one's gonna design, we don't have an estimate, we don't know how much that's gonna be, right?
And in the meantime, you got ten, ten.
No doubt about it. Don't disagree with that. Uh, but, but I'm just saying, I mean, the reality of it is, Commissioners, this agreement we have that applies to this money that, to make that connection to Twelfth Street, it's supposed to be installed by the end of November, according to this agreement. We're now the end of August.
Now, we're talking on the twelve unit subdivision, your metal.
All, all of it together.
By the end of November.
By the end of November. Right, so.
Is Sierra or is Brad supposed to install that? Heritage or Brad?
I believe it's Brad.
Cause it's with Terrykey Farms Inc.
We, we are in a development agreement with Brad, not with Terrykey. Like I said, he retained the secondary water. He is the supplier for the Terrykey.
Okay.
So we've got three months to get that done. We have the money in escrow, but nothing's been done to begin this process.
Not enough.
Well, we don't, we've probably got enough to lay the pipe.
That's the point.
But there's no water, why the water?
Functioning and everything we need to do.
But that's not what the escrow is for. The escrow is, is to lay the pipe.
I understand, but in this case, uh, they, they happen to be the first ones in. And, uh, the, the, the water isn't being provided like it's supposed to be.
But I think that could be the case in any subdivision.
Correct.
If the developer said, nah, I got the pipe in, but I'm not gonna give you water. At some point, people start suing each other.
Yeah.
And that may be what has to happen here.
Right, yeah, which is what may need to happen in this case, but we shouldn't have to be in the middle of that. So that's, you know.
Yeah, but we are. The fact that we are the permitting agency, we're stuck here, Gage.
Well, the reason with permitting agencies is because we made that exception to go occup- you know, let them go ahead and tell occupancy. We said, look, we want all the improvements in before we even give you a building permit. This never would have happened.
Yeah, and we do that now.
Yeah.
But this is one of those cases where it.
You guys have something from the, all the builders, an agreement that says that they understand that they're not going to get occupancy, right?
Yeah.
Is it like filed on title?
So, all ten parcels?
Ryan's gonna go record it. I told him that last week.
I guess we gotta have, uh, to record, we have to have a notary.
Yeah, they need to be notarized and have a legal description.
Yeah, I wanna have that. So it's got, that's all it is. So it's not notarized, all ten to be recorded.
But they all signed it. So they, I mean, I guess, uh, the only pushback I picture is the people they sell the lots to, right, who don't read this stuff.
That's why you need to record.
Yeah, but I guess at the time they buy it, they would be reading.
Right.
You hope.
That's why it needs.
Well, Gage, property, this is kinda your specialty. What do you think about this?
Well, if this wasn't recorded, it was never on the title report, which means that there's no legal obligation. At the end of the day, that somebody could provide it for him, but there's no insurance that said, look, this document was, so then it becomes a court case. Then it's, then it's a matter, well, did you see it? Did you not see it? Or we didn't see it? Somebody, so unless it's recorded, you don't have proof that it was ever a legitimate, uh, document.
Have any of these lots been sold to homeowners yet?
Two, two of them, the homeowners, homeowners are building. Um, the other eight are builders. So we, we need to have them come back in and.
Yeah, well, we, you need to get that recorded immediately.
Yeah.
That's.
So we got, we got two homeowners. Occup- two homeowner occupants. Okay.
Yeah, didn't David Roll sign?
So Liam, will you fix this document so I can have?
Add a notary on it?
So, if we had to take this over, Sean.
Yeah.
Say these, that we, uh, use the, uh, escrow money, you know, everything into the road.
Yes.
So if we had to take it over, we could literally go from Twelfth Street down to forty-three hundred. There, then down, well, the pipe's in the road right there.
So the original plan, Commissioner?
No, no, that's the sewer pipe.
That's correct.
I'm talking about water.
He's actually laying the secondary two point seven hundred.
Is it?
Oh, it's laying all the way to there.
Right there? So we could just simply go to there and connect, and we'd be out. Right there? So we could just simply go to there and connect and we'd be out twenty or thirty thousand dollars to do it. But we could, uh, we could make sure that all the, that everybody else paid for it. I mean, we wouldn't allow nobody else to connect.
We can, we can run the pipe, sure. It's just.
Pipes run.
It's just put it in the water.
Right, well, we'd have to read a, uh, reach an agreement with Randy. Of course, Randy might not enter to, into an agreement with us if he's not getting paid by the others because that's what he's using for leverage. So I suspect he wouldn't enter into that agreement with the Ken. Do you know how much we're talking? What do they owe him? Do you, Gage, has I said anything to you?
I don't have talked about this.
I talked to him this morning. He was gonna have Cammy look into it.
Why do they owe him money? Is it just for that line?
He has to pay, Randy has to pay yearly O and M for that water.
Right, he does. Yeah, that's a lot.
Saying, okay, Brad.
I think he pays him half million dollars.
Five hundred thousand. Up, it's, it's like seven hundred dollars acre foot. So however many acre foot Brad pays needs for this. He's gotta pay Randy the O and M, so Randy can.
Brad hasn't paid it because he's not using, I assume. But still, he committed.
How many, how many months do we have? At three months, two months? Maybe it's worth it for us to just reach out and say, hey, remember when you told us that you were gonna have a.
Reach out to Brad?
Oh, yeah.
Brad knows. He's fully aware.
Say, we're calling this in, just so you're aware, we're calling this in, we're building it.
How much do you have in the escrow here?
It was. It was two hundred and.
So, yeah, that, guys, that's the other point. Uh, we shouldn't be communicating with Brad directly.
So just to be clear, Sean, I sent you that email this morning. I don't know if you saw it. Chad and I have not been communicating with him. Now, that doesn't mean, who are you communicating?
We should send that to.
We're not communicating with Brad.
We should send that to Darren Hammond. Any response we have should go straight to his attorney. Uh, because a- and it probably should come through our attorney's office. Brad has told us.
Yeah.
To not contact him, me or any of my staff.
Yeah.
Zero contact.
I was copied on that.
And we are sticking to that.
Now, Commissioner, you were copied on the same email I'm referring to. We got last night. It was sent at seven thirty last night.
I have read it, yeah.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
But when I see stuff from him, obviously it catches my attention.
I'm wanting to file to go out there and sit down with him.
It's probably, well.
And just say, okay, Brad, which way do you want me to go?
Yeah, you could do it. You're not part of my staff.
I know. And I could go out there and just say, look.
But the rest of you should. No, that's, that's where we're at, Commissioner. We're, we're.
We're getting ready to make some moves here and I, I just want to know what you want me to do.
Yeah.
Leave our staff alone.
Doesn't matter what we do, it's gonna affect you. So.
And I think in Brad's mind, his statement about ha- do not have your staff, do not contact me. I think he thinks it only applies to planning because ever since that initial email, he's still been contacting Chad and I.
Have you responded?
No, sir, we have not. We have absolutely not responded to him one day. As, as far as we're concerned, that's a ping pong ball that bounced off the wall. It didn't even penetrate, so.
So, and maybe we need to have more conversation about that, about how we respond and who we respond through, but.
Well, I think we're going to be responding to his attorney that comes from our office.
I agree with that.
Yeah. I think we're at that point in most of our stuff. We'll go talk to him.
Well. This is turned into a real. Mess.
You guys are looking to for us to hold up, uh, building permits on the barn. It sounds like we will. And yeah, I guess we have to figure out we can hold up occupancy.
Well, that too, can we hold up billing permits? Based on what Liam said, we can hold up. We just don't issue them.
So occupancy though, there is a guarantee for occupancy.
There's a guarantee for the improvements.
So then occupancy does technically need to be given.
I, but you have to look at the specifics of the language. There are some that have to have done before they can get occupancy.
Yeah, and if that, if that.
Perfect.
One bad thing is this is all, all code.
I know.
But does it, that's.
Good point.
What'd you say? I didn't hear that.
The billing permits were issued when the new code was in place, so.
Which do they fall under?
They fall under the old subdivision.
Oh, cuz it's under the subdivision.
Cuz I'm the subdivision.
I get it.
So can we, but can we hold up issuing billing permits?
On the barn. We can stop any new billing permit on the barn. We cannot issue it.
Even though we have a guarantee.
If we have justification to back it up, then yeah.
Even if our, even if our justification is even though we have an escrow for it, there's no infrastructure.
I think we need to make sure we hold that justification.
Yeah, the, the, there is infrastructure in the ground. It's just not connected. That's what you just.
Not all the way.
Yeah, there's no pipe from, from this road to.
Would it help if, I mean, I could go back to my board and, I mean, we could honestly go shut the water off there and say, until this is resolved because it directly affects us at the water district. Could we go in and just shut that line off?
Is that a fire safety thing?
There's nothing built in there. So as long as they bagged all the.
Did you condition your approval on secondary water?
Yes.
So if you conditioned it that way, then yeah.
Well, here, here it goes back to the old thing. So here was the agreements that, or here was the approvals that. Uh, because it was under our previous manager. So dated September twenty-sixth of twenty seventeen. It states right here that upon the development meeting, the district specs of the water district. That they will give them the will serve, um, but secondary must be in there by serve by others. And then on. All right, here on February tenth of twenty nineteen, it says escrow must be in place for the secondary water system before approval is given. The system must be approved by the water district and we were county planning. The secondary water system must be in place one year after construction begins. So right now, they're, they're based on this. They started construction in. February of twenty twenty-one. Well, that's when we had a pre-con, I guess. But I think they started before that, but based on that day.
That's part of the process.
So they're over the one. They're over the one year, so we could go in based on this agreement, shut the water off and say, you can't have water until this is resolved. Yeah, until that's.
Yep.
Because there, and so then, then it goes back to you can't issue a billing permit because there's not culinary water for the fire safety.
We'll just have to let Fire Marshal know that those hydrants aren't.
Yeah, grind it.
Well, I mean, that would solve like, that's the bar itself. But it's the metals that we still gotta figure out a solution to. And I, I really think if we were. Went into, you know, like we talk, get a letter together that states that we can send it to those ten homes and say, look, this is where you're headed. You know, in three months, the, I mean, we could pull it, but we still don't have a source of water. Could, you know, would you guys be willing to that? So that we can get it sent to, we can send it to certified mail so that we have a receipt. They received it. Ryan can work on. Getting the letter with a notary so we can record it. But just, I think if we don't, not, it's not just the county then putting pressure, it's then ten people that are building homes and have money on the line.
So what cost is to get to this point recently is the fact that Hooper Taylor wanted six hundred thousand dollars.
No, 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 no. Hooper irrigation.
Hooper irrigation. It is like if these all mixed up. Hooper irrigation wants six hundred thousand to connect.
So, but from what Rex told me, no, the six hundred thousand is to run the line that Brad's gotta foot to run the line. It's not to connect. Brad's gotta get water from. Basically the school to where the. And that's what the six hundred thousand is what Rex told me. Okay, which is, that line's gotta be put in place either way. It's not like he's giving him six hundred thousand. And maybe there's some confusion between Brad and, and who, and Hooper and who's gonna install the line? Whether Brad's gonna install it and that's his money, you know, that's the six hundred thousand to give to Hooper or Hooper wants the cash and they'll install it. Maybe there's confusion.
Do we be, do we be.
That's Rex Hancock, right?
Yes.
Do we be proactive now or reacting later?
I, I don't mind the idea of sending a letter now. Give, I like notice.
I'm with that.
I think the more notice we give them, so they don't wanna come in and say, well, why don't you tell us about it? So, and I, I, I like the idea of a joint letters so they can't point fingers. We're not gonna point about you and vice versa.
We're, we're all in a bad situation. We should have never allowed them to build, but we went on the benefit and we listened to it. And, and honestly, we've all been burned. So let's just, yeah.
Ultimately, if we had our way, we still want Hooper to do this.
I don't disagree.
Yeah, well, then you've gotta continue with supply of water.
When's Hooper gonna be in, you know, build a pond there, you know?
So the pond's not going in from the last meeting we all had, a few of us had months ago with, with Hooper and Riverbend's development is. They're, they're gonna build a siphon and a pump house. And then they were hoping to get the ARPA funds to do the pond. They can't do the pond, but Hooper's told us just off of the siphon and the pump house. There's enough water to supply Riverbend and the Terrace developments just off of that.
And pump out of the river?
No, they're gonna pump, the siphons coming out of the canal, out of a pump house structure, then they'll just build a pond later. But essentially, the, the canal is the pond. On the design they have.
Is there not, is water in there all the time?
Yeah, that can, that's one of their main branches.
Yeah. But not enough to run along there and hit, hit it all.
Eventually they did a pond.
Yeah, eventually, just, yeah, there's not enough storage in there to keep what's gotta flow down the canal for their other users and. I should leave this standing for the last. How long, Gary? It's, this has been a process, right? And the problem is Brad changes his mind.
Yeah, I know.
Depending on. What he's told and I, I, I just reread his email and it appears like you probably misquoted it. He said they're requiring to pay six hundred thousand upfront access fees and then an additional four hundred thousand in order materials. To run the piping to this system. So we're talking about a million bucks. But the reality of it is, you go two years and not paying Randy. You're kinda there at a million bucks anyways, right? So.
Well, Randy's fees, that's Randy's total.
That's, yeah, that's.
That, that's his total.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But. But either way, I mean, it's. It's a lot of money, but I, I guess Brad's got eighty-three in the barn and the twelve, so you got ninety-five lots. What's Hooper's impact fees? Eight thousand, isn't it? Plus the water. So I mean, you're, you're right, close to that dollar amount.
Yeah.
You know, the heat, the, whether Brad pays it and gets it, adds it to the lot or.
Right.
I mean, cuz that's the same agreement basically that they worked out with Riverbend, is the developer was throwing the cash.
That's right.
Then they tack it on. In lot, in place of, in lieu of impact fees essentially. And we've, we've done similar agreements.
We held up the metals as long as, I mean, the metals wanted to build a year ago. They were before the barn. We held them up as long as we could. Our stance is, uh, you either have escrow. Right, money in escrow or to recoup or, uh, the infrastructure injury for. So once they put it in escrow, we felt like we needed to let them start building, you know?
So, uh, as far as Hooper Water's concerned. They probably just don't have the main dollars.
Yeah, I can't speak for them, but I mean, I, I think they want, they want to serve this area. They want.
Yeah, I suspect they just don't have the money to.
They don't.
Put it in.
Sure they don't have the capital. But then it's kind of a two-way street though. I mean, if you look at any other development, the developer's gotta get it to the source to get it there.
Right.
So he's kind of getting, in, in my opinion, he's getting a, a, a benefit because. He doesn't have to run the line all the way there at his expense. The impact fees are gonna pay it, so he's kinda getting the line for essentially nothing. Because if you look at, so say Winston Park, how far did they have to go to get Hooper water? How far did Stagecoach? How far did Halcyon? Just over there on eighteen hundred. They had to go clear from dang near where they're building the high school. And bring it up forty-three and all the way over, and that was all of their expense.
Yeah.
A- as a development expense. So really, with what Hooper's asking, yeah, it's his money upfront, but, you know, he can. It, it, it essentially.
Looks to me like he's gonna pay it to them or to Randy. I mean, and it's what you've represented is probably fairly close to the same price.
I am, and I'm, I don't have it. That's, but I mean, if you look at distance and pipe and then you look at the ball and everything that it takes to. Plus you gotta get in State Road, which is even more of a headache and everything else. Yeah, it's probably six.
But you met with us over a month ago.
Yeah.
Nothing's, we're still, I mean, he's had a month to get a contract put together to, we're not seeing progress on anything, right? I mean. It's, we've gotta see something and then we haven't saw it soon.
I was wondering if I should meet with Rex. Rex, I wouldn't mind it. I like.
I, I think you, I mean, I think it would go a long way. Just, like I said, you, you gotta get the story from both sides.
Yeah.
And that's after I got the phone call from Brad last week, that's why I wanted to talk to Rex and get both sides of that story. This is just another. Wish there was a way we could just make him do it.
Commissioners, I was just visiting with Liam and what your thoughts here on the barn? We put a notice on all the properties that no building permits will be issued and just recorded on each one of the. Properties until that secondary water issue is resolved.
On the barn part, that's that might have started yet.
That's phase one.
Absolutely.
Just so we.
Well, that's what you guys were just talking about, recording that.
Well, that was on the metals.
That's on the.
Oh, that's on the metals.
Yeah, but on the barn.
Have those lots been sold or not? In the barn?
Barn. I don't know. I think they're all still owned by, uh, Heritage.
Are they?
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't. You'd make that public notice now before they start telling something.
Of course, we're gonna have Harrison here going nuts, right? Saying, what are you doing, Demy?
Although everybody's already signed in that subdivision. They've already signed those agreements. Saying they acknowledge they can't.
They know.
Yeah.
We would just have Heritage coming in and asking us what we were doing. We filed that notice?
Yeah.
I don't care.
And I don't think it's gonna catch anybody off, off guard, right? I think everybody under, knows where we're at with this. But I think it just takes it that one step further. But now it's a recorded official notice. Nothing's gonna happen till this is done, you know?
The fact you recorded on the property, would you send them a notice? The people that are listed on there? And.
We should have done with the metals, but.
I'm practically okay with that.
I think we.
You okay that hard?
The two existing lots in the metals, it's not under construction. I think you do the same one.
Yeah, yeah. The side lots and metals, same one, yeah. Absolutely.
All right, then I'll go out and talk to Brad. Isn't Brad living in that little barn affair thing on there?
Yep, yep, right there.
Yeah.
Give us a number.
No, I've gone out of my way not to.
I can get it for you.
I don't want him calling me.
I, just on your, on your office phone here?
Yeah, I don't want him calling me. You know, I know, I see because I'm re, I'm c- CC'd on all these. Things that he's sent here, you all, and it just seems to never stop. You, you feel like saying, do you sit up all night long and think about this and write it and record it?
Based on the timestamps on the emails.
Well, and then. He's such a Jekyll and Hyde from when you're talking to him and when he's on his typewriter.
He's, I've never had a real bad meeting with him in person. It's always on the email.
The emails, I agree.
Yeah, that's. Well, you know, we're always told to put things in writing, but it, then you know, uh, what his really feelings are.
Yeah.
So let you know if you should trust the other. You know, I, he's a nice enough guy, right there, that far away. After that, just, to me, let me go, I'm gonna take them if I can. Look at the energy that's expended again for the four thousand nine hundred and thirty-second time since I've been here. This is just, this is the most expensive subdivision. Every one of those lots should have a county premium of ten thousand dollars on it for permits. Cuz it just takes too much time. It takes too much time.
Yeah.
I agree.
There needs to be a tax overlay district, right? On anything that's put under that thing.
I think you're going somewhere that I like.
Well, it's, it's a cost of doing business. This is, we've worked with lots of developers. There's only one that keeps coming back. But it, it's, for me, this is a, sorry about. Let me know when we're done.
Can we set up an escrow for that, Commissioner Harvey? I think we can call it brain damage escrow.
You know, the problem is really, this isn't necessarily the only one. We met on one just the other day. And he's gonna take care of it, he says, and oh yeah, I'm getting around to it, but it's been years and he's not done it yet. And so.
You know, I'm glad it's in your portfolio.
What a pain these guys are.
Yes, yes.
Why do we get all the bad ones out here?
I don't think we're the only one to get some of them.
No.
It's, it's, it's growing pains. I mean, honestly, that's what we're up against.
He's the one on that lift station.
It is.
Yeah, you know, it, it goes back, I've heard it said long before.
These developments are done. We, we haven't seen a lot of.
Or what?
The easy developments are done.
Yeah.
We're going through.
These are the ones we're dealing with now. To answer your question, these are the ones that are dealing with now that are, there's a little bit more challenge to them. And that's really the truth.
And that's. All right, well.
We're running from our lessons.
We are. It's all over money. It's all over money. Well, I'm not sure it's over money. They, they, they put escrow funds here. They, they expended hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Well, if it's not over money, then why was he being distorted for six hundred thousand and another four hundred thousand? Those are excessive. And so what's he gonna do? Get him changed? It's just, it causes all this other stuff. It costs money to do business. That's all there is to it. If I don't like the price of a toilet, I guess I can dig a hole, put it in the ground. Well, no, I can't do that. It's not. You get what I'm saying?
I do. All right. It's such a, you know, so before you walk out of here.
Yes, sir.
Well, oh, put that back up on there, that. Well, okay, you got it up here. Don't take that off yet. So Gary, right here. We show, uh.
Right.
A master planned lift station right there.
Yeah. Where are you going? Thank you, sir.
So. That master planned lift station, would that just pump around the corner and go right into that sewer line?
I believe it takes it, yes, yes, because the main.
Right into. All right.
And that'll service. You know, all this area, but yeah, serves quite a bit.
Pretty big. I turned that way earlier.
Well, so that right there, that right there is about forty-six lots, as I recall.
Well, that one alone, because the area.
And now it's ready to come in. None of this will, because you want to keep all that. Well, I'm.
There we go.
I just question the location of that one.
Well, turn on the. It, it's not super, super specific, Commissioner. It's kind of a general location, but the idea is it's dug deep enough that it could take all that.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. So it's more actually right at the intersection.
Service.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they were proposing it back here someplace, but.
Yeah, hold on, what do you mean? It's at the intersection?
For this is right there.
This is somewhere in this area.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Point is, the guy that wanted to develop that.
That's right.
Yeah. He couldn't afford it and we've told him that he didn't have to pay us. That we could help him with impact fees and he's gone away. He's never heard of us and shit. You lucked. All right, guys, thanks. So Chad. Oh, you went to King's Feet?
Oh, I did King's.
Couple of weeks ago. Was it? And how long did it take you to do that?
It, it was ten hours this year.
Did you? So you did it with scouts?
So I started out with them and then.
I should have.
One, did it, held off, and then two.
Laughed it, good hell, I just heard.
Party's over.
We just got the one group to where the break off is. I went up some of their key backs and they were. All right, wife and I are on Saturday, though.
So how's the?
Five thousand.
Ready to retire from this and do that whole time?
It's not that crazy. I gotta have capital working, working.
That's disgusting.
I really don't. I'm not playing. I just, I just can't everything I got. When you going back to Disneyland there?
Ryan, how's it going?
Wonderful.
It's a good word.
Well, the golf tournament was okay.
Oh, the GOP?
Yeah, I kind of. It wasn't that well attended.
What, how many teams they have?
Twenty?
Twenty? That's, they were hoping for what, twenty plus, so it's.
Yeah, but you'd think they should fill the. You know, with the amount of preparation.
For what they go through, twenty's not gonna raise them a lot of money.
Oh.
Few thousand, maybe.
Yeah. Well, they, you know.
I got a, probably like you guys, I got an invite to go see Ted Cruz.
Yeah.
And I'm like, I already.
I wanted to go up and see Ted and his buddy, Mitt, no, who, well, Mike.
Lee. Yeah, I don't think Cruz and Mick get along very well. But, but if Mitt, if Mitt Romney was up there, I'm sure Jenkins would have been first in line.
Oh, he, yeah, he had his chance last week.
I want you to know that I was in a room the other day and when Gage walked in, it said, Gage, how are you? I knew your bike name.
It gets you in the old soft spot, doesn't it?
All right, Gage is smooth.
I've dealt with Mitt for a while.
I hear he's.
I tried to talk Jenkins into going down and letting up with Mitt.
I hear, I hear Romney's really a down-to-earth guy, but when it comes to politics and just.
He's a nice enough guy. You know, I don't agree with one of his stats, like, he's a nice enough guy. So was, the Cruz thing was today, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I got notice of it. They just put out like.
Thursday or Friday?
Yeah, it's like, well, jeez, and they did it right when the golf tournament is, so they would have probably a better turnout for both of them.
Yeah. So did they have a lunch and stuff up there for the?
I don't.
Golf tournament?
I think, oh yeah, the lunch, it was okay.
Was it? Yeah. Where was the tournament?
The barn. I saw your sign there.
You had a sign there?
You did. You were a whole sponsor.
You a whole sponsor?
I say it's a commissioner, or, or Harvey. Oh, uh, oh, eleven?
I gave, I gave him some money for carts. I don't know if they even.
Yeah, you are recognized for the carts.
This must have been Republican.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Craig Dearden.
Yeah.
Dearden.
Oh, I was gonna say, if it wasn't for Dearden. That's the only reason I did it.
I heard, uh, Lorraine Brown was in charge, but then she got kicked out last minute.
Yeah, good she had it.
I mean, the golf tournament too. I mean, her streak is horrible.
Did they kick her out of the golf tournament too?
Being a rapper.
That's funny. There's no way you're lying.
Okay, good. All right, Sheriff, welcome. Welcome. Good afternoon. Uh, I handed you, yours was on your, yeah, right there. That's Harvey's.
Yeah.
So this is a draft from Brian Baron. If you guys want to review it, I don't, not expecting an answer for today. But this is the noise ordinance for those coming down the cane for the air brakes or the, but, uh, old-fashioned is the Jake brake.
Yeah, so what about the thumpity thump thump? Those big boom boom things?
The problem with the noise ordinance is it has to be measurable.
Yeah.
Because what annoys you and what annoys me could be a whole different pitches, tones, right? Uh, decibels and all that. So there has to be a, an ordinance that's created and which is the first, uh, issue. Second issue is if it wants, if you want to enforce it, there has to be a distance, there has to be a decibel range to be enforced. And you have to have a device or a tool that, you know, if John Doe's hearing this loud noise, you gotta stand in that spot with your meter. To say yes, this violates. If you don't, you don't have anything.
Well, how do they do it down in Huntington Beach?
It's a, it's an ordinance. It gets very specific.
Boy, that's, they do a good job with it down there.
That's been established for some time. I know the ordinances that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, we're a little different geographic area.
Well, dude.
I just, I remember all the phone calls. In fact, I still get them from people that live around the reservoir saying, they just, do we have a noise ordinance up there?
Yeah, that one's a little different. We had an issue. I think you gave me, you called me once about a neighbor that complained about something and. We actually wrote person of the wrong code and it has to do with the water park code or something like that. It was all fixed. But I think it's the activity that should have been cited at the time, not the noise. Does that make sense? That was the issue.
Part I struggle with is enforcement. And you're taking somebody's word and by the time you hear that it's a complaint, the noise is gone. So unless you're, unless you've got an officer's, I mean, who's an enforcer?
Right, you gotta call the person to your spot and listen and judge for themselves because.
But, but by the time you get a call in, that, that truck's gone and it might be, may never show back up or it might come tomorrow. Who knows?
It's true.
I'm just saying how, you know, how do you actually enforce this to have any type of relevance? I, tell me, I'm just, I'd like to know.
No, if that's the case, uh, when I was in Clearfield, there was a place called Bogies. Great, uh, very popular loud music. And, uh, we at one point, the state code.
Why?
I don't know last, it's just bogies during the time. And the, the homes around it were so annoyed, they kept calling us and we were writing tickets. And then, and then, and then they challenged it, but it, it, what, 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 what is too noisy?
Yeah.
What is too noisy? Each of us is different. I'm a light sleeper. Anything wakes me up, but I got family that can sleep through a hurricane.
Right.
And it's just to each his own.
Anyway.
Okay, um. Uh, emergency prep slash self reliance bear from Lisa Schwartz is coming along very nice. There's a lot of people that really want to be a part of this. This is gonna be a great community, uh, thing for the county. You guys have already been prepped on that.
This is what Lisa talked about.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're, we're trying to press upon people's self reliance. You guys all know when a disaster come, the government comes later. Don't depend on us to fix your problems.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, um.
Like anybody knows what they're talking about realizes that the law requires being there not to be there for seventy-two hours.
Right.
So you're really on your own for three frickin' days.
Yep. And then that's if they get there in seventy-two hours.
Well, yeah. Depending on what, uh, could happen. Might be longer than that.
All right, um, I've been getting emails from, uh, UAC about opioid settlement funds coming in. Uh, we're gonna draft something, but we wanna make sure you guys know that we are interested in those funds, if available, to the sheriff's office. It'll be of one of maybe two or three capacities. One, we think it'd be very beneficial to Kevin Eastman and his group. We also think it'll be very beneficial to help expand or support, um, the receiving center. And thirdly, it could contribute to our medical mental health.
We, boy, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Chergel, he hit the three buttons that I was thinking about on that medicine one. Right there.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
Chair Jakes, I actually had that discussion. I'd like to sit down with you and, you know, this new criminal justice coordinating council, you know, as, and any of those three could apply, but.
Or whatever in that range.
But I would like to have that conversation to see, and then the other, you know, conversation is who's actually providing that in the community now? Do we support that? Do we support a Kevin Eastman? I just don't like duplication of services.
I don't either.
But I, but I wanna make sure that this money is put in, and we, I think there's a good opportunity for us here on, you know, if you look at your, uh, receiving center. If you look at, uh, what do you call your program when they're leaving? You're exiting the.
Oh, the, the, the reentry program?
Yeah, the reentry. I think there's some opportunity for that.
Uh, so, so if you look at one thing that you guys, you guys are gonna get, uh, some funds and you're gonna say, what's the best thing to look at? And I, I'm not gonna tell you what, what you, you, you should make your decision on other than some influence ideas, but. Prevention, right? And then if you're in the situation, what's the, the medical response? And then what's the afterwards, right? What do you do for, you know, like, uh, oh, what's it, prevention and then what's the, what's the end one caller? Uh, yeah, cure could be it, but you know, the afterwards, you know, it's like homelessness. I'd rather spend a lot of time into prevention than to wait until, just create, keep creating more and more homeless homes, right? Uh, and I don't know what, what you can do with that, but those are the three errors that we ought to look at.
And I like the idea of prevention. In this case, I don't know what demographic you can look at, you actually, you know, see, how can we prevent them? Because that's a lot of that comes from doctors, hospital visits, et cetera. I'm just saying is, once they're in there, we know that a lot of those people that are in jail are there because of drug related.
Yes.
And if you could stop that recidivism.
Oh, yeah, most of the people in our jails are seventy-five to eighty percent because of drugs.
You know, there you've got somebody you could actually put your finger on and say, this person's got a drug, it's, it's opioid related. Let's, what can we do to put money in to make sure that when he goes out, he doesn't go and shoot the heroin up?
Yeah.
Next day. Prevention is really at any of those three stages, right?
Yeah.
The early stage is just, you know, maybe a hotline or some help. Second stage is once you've been arrested or you're in trouble for, right? Third stage is.
So Gary brought this up.
I like where you're going.
I talked to him the other day and you, this is the day you didn't come in. But I told him, uh, that I, I wanted to, uh, sit down and talk conceptually. Not about any one person or one location, but in concept, what we were trying to do with this money. And then I've asked, uh, we, uh, we had Weaver Human Services come over and make a pitch to us. I've also asked Melissa to give me her opinion. And you just heard now the, the.
Sure.
Uh, well, Gage says wants to meet with them and I agree, to get their opinion. Then I figured once we get all this kind of put together, we'd have a meeting and sit down and talk about it.
Ever.
I don't know if there's a big rush to spend it.
No.
In fact, we thought it'd be here months ago and we still don't have it.
I, I think any one of those that you named can benefit from it.
Yeah.
I think, there's no one source.
There's no one source. I just think we have to be a little, uh, strategic on where we put them.
I agree.
Because there's gonna be people asking for money. Well, we already saw that. There's gonna be people asking for money. We saw it from Kevin Eastman. Is that the best? Maybe it is.
But you know, Kevin came in right off the bat and we start talking about expungement money.
Yeah.
Well, there's several groups in the county right now that'll do expungements for free.
Co- cottages of hope.
Right. So why duplicate those services?
And, and, and maybe that's the objective. What, of all these organizations with the county, what does what? If someone like Kevin wants, well, I want money for this, but though, these groups already do that. Why do we need, you know what I mean?
That's.
Because when they get upset at us, the county, we're saying, you're taking away our.
That's, and, and they use, you know, they use donations and other, I'd rather support somebody that's in there doing it, doing the great job.
So would I.
And, and add to that fund rather than be the creator of another program.
Yeah, why recreate it?
Why, why are we starting from scratch?
Well, maybe what we wanna do is put out a, uh, contract for somebody to come get money from us for expungements.
Yeah.
And they're, yeah.
Maybe that.
And then in their application, they can show you their success rate and that's where you put your money.
The health department ought to have some way in on this, I would.
Sure.
Uh, as far, as far as where they think, not, not as far as the dollars, as far as weighing where they think the money could be spent or could be directed.
Well, maybe we ought to have them come over and talk to us.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. Well.
Anyway, health related issues.
That was my plan, in the next month to do something, I suppose.
Okay. No, I'm good. We already talked about it.
Can I borrow your computer and I wanna pull up, uh.
Right there.
Picture, if you don't mind. And being that there's nobody on there, I don't think we need to go into quotes. It's about property.
Oh. Need to close it. Oh, this is, I don't know what you're talking about.
Property.
Property. Like they say, buy dirt.
Buy dirt. Did you see Moab? Oh, geez. Oh geez, poor buggers. They're getting hammered, going right down the road, down Main Street.
I heard there was restaurants with a foot of water.
There was?
Yeah, I saw it certainly over the road. All the things I saw were water higher than the tire. They were into the rim of the car.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, then do the, uh, they've got, they have that, that boardwalk down there. It's over the boardwalk and into the, uh, into the, uh, stores.
Yeah.
Oh my, you know. Foot eighteen inches. Yeah, them poor buggers.
Wow.
They're getting hammered.
Okay.
Oh, this is, I know Claude.
Claude, I, that after I left here last week, I went right over Claude was outside and, and I met him at the fence.
He was outside?
He was outside Whedon.
Okay, good.
And I told him that, uh, uh, said, hey, I'd like to meet with you again. I said, I'll be honest with you. I misjudged your property, but I do not need it. But I think the county's looking and we may want your ground. Are you open to, cause he goes, all offers or something. Everything's on the table is what his word was. So he owns this triangle. So we have a parking lot right here.
Right.
And then there's the CSI.
Right.
So this is the one that's just dirt on top of concrete tires. No, he owns it.
Yeah, he owns.
That's what's all we thought. We owned it.
No, that's garbage. You're gonna spend a lot of money to clean that up or you just pave it. And then he owns all this. And oops, he was telling me that Ogden City was on the trail, came over on his property. Started staking it and he was really upset about that. Cause they didn't ask for permission. And he says that they're gonna be putting in some kind of a walk trail. Right along there. Ogden's plans are.
That's what it is.
But all this.
Is that Ogden City? Is that green?
Yes.
Yeah, film rail trail.
That's the rail trail, yeah.
Or the rail, the old rail.
So all, all this is for sale.
What's he want for it?
Yeah, I didn't ask. I, I, I'm very careful. I don't wanna. Step on your guys' toes. You know what I mean? I don't wanna, I'll go as far as you tell me, but I'm not gonna go any further. I just made contact. Like we discussed and he said he'd be willing to sell.
Well, a year ago right now, maybe sixteen, seventeen months. I had, uh. Sean, contact.
Sean has never been in contact. I did ask him that.
That's not right.
That's what he said. That's what he told me.
Yeah.
Says, nobody from the county's reached out to him in a few years.
Doesn't know Sean's with the county.
Yeah, oh yeah, maybe.
They were in the ward or something. I'm just telling you, Sean knew him and, uh, contacted him and he had said he had no interest.
Yeah, I know that happened because I had conversations with Sean. In fact, I think I talked to Claude back then because Sean said call him as well. So this has been over a year ago. Okay.
Year and a halfish.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. My interest was not on the big piece. My interest. I looked at that and said, well, right there is so small, he can hardly get through it. So from there back.
It's junk.
You know, I viewed that as something we should own. Uh, just like you said, we could put a parking lot there. We do all kinds of things with it. And, uh, uh, from there back. Now the front. Man, it all fronts depot drive. I, if he was interested, I'd be interested in buying all of it.
Well, we were at that time, remember? Because we talked, well, what's kicked it off is we talked about putting that, uh, sign or monument or something out there on. And then some of it had to go on his property.
Yeah, yeah.
That's when we started that conversation. It might've been Mendoza.
Yep. Well, so, uh. When we looked at putting the bridge over, uh, the, uh, railroad track here. The way these businesses were accessed is you came down this street. Went up here, over to here, went back in and then went to those businesses. So that's how they access those businesses that are right there on twelve street. What a rotten access.
Yep.
Not a good access.
Yeah, basically they're gonna lose all their twelfth street frontage. Yeah.
If the bridge goes in.
Yeah, that bridge is.
That bridge will go in eventually.
Yeah, sooner, whenever, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the, yeah, this is, uh, this is the railroad right here.
Then there's this right here, this will be the railroad and then this street right here will go underneath it. So the rail will go under it and this will go under it, then it'll fold down like this. But I know mosquito abatement, they were gonna come in, whether it was here or whether it was here. Like this, it was gonna be like a cul-de-sac like that. And then a cul-de-sac to turn around and come back out. So this will all be. They'll lose all their access.
Do you know, do you want, is this an actual road right here?
I don't believe so. That goes into, uh. That recycling place.
Yep.
Eddie, Eddie Harberson.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
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 That's where it does.
That is Harberson. So those people come in like this and go into here. No, well, they might, but when Ogden came in here, showed us their plans, their plan showed them go to the rail trail and back out. And hitting them all across there. I haven't seen that. I saw the one that came in with the cul-de-sac. And that's how then the mosquito would come back in. So the mosquito would come in here, Harberson come in here. This Peterson plumber come in here. This sucks. Is that their name Peterson? Uh, but anyway, yeah, so this had come back and, yeah.
So if Ogden is, doesn't want Kiesel there, and then you got people saying, well, if you move Kiesel, then it's gonna affect our business like Weimar Human Services. There's plenty of ground right here. To accommodate a lot of those places.
I absolutely agree with that. I think we ought to get a price for Claude, what he's thinking. And the thing is, is that the cleanup's gonna be.
So, you want me to have, do you wanna do this? Yeah, let me, let me get.
Maybe you, rather than Sean, because I'm not sure it worked for him.
Yeah, that's.
Now.
I know Claude.
If he says no to you guys, let me know. I'll ask him, cause he wants to have a meeting with me about our plans.
Why don't you go with, with him? Why don't the both of you go?
Why don't you call Claude and set up a time where all three of us can meet?
And I'll, and we'll make it look like, uh, well, it may not look like, but we'll discuss our plans. And say, this may affect us and we may want this, or you can say this and.
I mean, we'll just cut to the chase and then it looks like either he's a buyer or he's either a seller or he's not. Let's get to it. Then we can go with whatever to.
He's gonna lose his access off of twelfth street eventually.
Yeah, what? Yeah.
He's gonna lose it.
I agree.
Does he know? He may not even know about.
He's gonna ev- eventually, they've gotta have that.
But I, I think that could be a land bank for us for the future.
I absolutely agree.
For whatever, whatever happens out there.
Well, we live in the banking business today, land banking.
Yeah.
Well, none of the business, I am of the opinion, this is more important as than the other piece.
Oh, I agree.
Because, uh, this is a dead end. It goes in and right back out and, uh, we can only use the property that's there, access that.
We, we have no options here.
Right.
You know, how many acres is that?
Hit that button, see what it says. Should come up.
Can you, can you X off your sheriff's office?
If these guys ever came for sale, I'd be interested in buying them too.
I agree.
Here, let me go to.
We know we're, we're not moving that facility out west or anywhere else.
No, it is where it is.
The only opportunity we have is to acquire real estate around it.
I agree with that.
That's all, that's our choice. You know, if you start looking and pick for, for Cenius and anything to the east past A Avenue there is out of the question.
I agree with that. Hundred percent. Normally if you go out a little, that those will come on.
I don't know about this property either here.
Ask you about that.
Well, that's all about, is it the phone company?
This, this is Google Earth. It doesn't show.
I got it. I'm, oh, you got Google Earth too.
Yeah.
Go on it.
But I don't know which one I'm in. I just want yours.
Hold on. What'd you say? Off, off, uh, off yours.
Off whatever you guys are logged in as.
Well, I think we go under GeoGizmo though.
Yeah. I'm getting there.
Maybe this will tell us.
Is that it? You're Geo giving, although, yeah, that's it. Maybe.
No, this is still Google.
That's Google Earth.
Wait, maybe.
I'm getting there.
Wonder if it's owned by, uh. Yeah, I don't know. I, I, so I don't have Geo.
I'm getting there.
Isn't that the character on, uh, what's that eighties horror movie with the little? Things that hatched it. You got water on them. They bred.
Oh yeah, little dirt giz- gizmo.
Yeah, gizmo.
Something like that.
Gremlins.
Gremlins.
Gremlins. I was telling you, gizmo, I figured gremlins. You know that movie? Probably watched it with your kids.
I, that's exactly who I watched it with. And that's been quite a while.
Yes, and those.
There you go. Okay, Sheriff, the complex.
Well, do you wanna set up a time with him?
Yep, I'll do that.
Okay. All right, you ready?
Yep.
Here's what he's got. That front piece. He's got several sections here. Four point one one. Two. So that'd be six. Point eight two. So there, now you're seven.
So this is, this is the triangle we're talking about with all the junk on.
No, it's down here a little more.
Oh.
And then we got this one. Two.
So.
Six, seven, eight, nine, eight, nine point. Where'd you come? This one isn't his. That's ours. No, that's right. You're right. Sorry. Store and more. So six and two and two. This is Tim and Diane Trust.
What's about right here?
Store and more. So he doesn't own that piece. There's a piece right next to it.
Yeah.
It's called Tim and Diane Bevocable Living Trust. It's right next to this, to him. Well, we don't.
Which one are you talking?
So here's.
Just to the, see the blue?
Oh, that's not his. And here's one that right there.
No, that's not his.
But the one in the back is Store and More. And that goes, that's the narrow piece.
Is this his piece?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, what I was thinking about is, of course, this is good dirt out here, but. About ten acres.
Who owns this one, Harv?
Yeah. Which one, bud? I.
This, yeah, that's the one I was.
Level three communication.
That's that.
Oh, so that's.
They all look how big it is. Yeah, it's big. Does it say what the acreage is? Nine.
Nine acres.
Yeah.
So is this like the phone company or?
I think.
Something to do with.
Level three communications. And then there's something down at the STC three holdings in Plain City. What? In Plain City? Eighteen eighty-five north, thirty-five hundred west in Plain City.
It's probably that, uh, offshore Caribbean account.
Probably bought with crypto.
This piece right here in the corner. Oh, these guys are like a, uh. Little construction outfit. It's between the two railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't mind owning that too.
No.
All that on that little triangle piece.
Well, that little.
Well, you know, really you start talking about that. You got all this stuff over in here. GSD LLC. What did you say the dude was with? It's got the, yeah, that's him.
Who?
That's, uh, your, uh, old, uh, I know who you're talking about, Eddie Harberson.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Eddie, yeah.
Eddie Harberson, that whole area back in there. He owns a lot of pieces back in there. My point was.
We want some of that?
Here's my thought. A little more money. We have, when then we can start carving it around. And making that road in there. And then we, that's where your roads go.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that big long road from, uh, behind our back entrance to the jail. To seventeen, that's a big long private drive. I, I think we have an agreement somewhere to share that FYI. It's a concrete road.
The road.
Well, what I'm saying is, once the, once the, uh, once the bridge is in, then our guys aren't gonna have any problem getting to and from out there. Cause you'll go out to the lot. Contact Eddie and say, hey, do you wanna sell that in the next two or three years?
Yeah.
He might sell it to us and allow us to make some payments to you.
Now, Ryan, come here real quick, bud.
That's actually pretty good dirt right there that Eddie has.
Well, yeah, if we bought that and we could eventually buy, uh. Buy, uh, this other piece from Claude. Well, now that it gives everything in there except for. Like this, all the way over. Yeah, if you could come right over there, you take a little L three.
Yeah.
Now you're tucked there in the back. You got mosquito over here. Oh yeah. And then you've got some. Well, Ogden sells that trail.
It's Eddie's piece.
How much? Well, there's one. He's got a ton.
Well, the big one.
Well, he's got this one.
Uh huh.
That one's six. Hold on. This one's two and a quarter.
That's the one that fronts twelve.
Yeah, this is the propane.
Seven, eight.
There's two and a quarter, nine, ten. There's one point four.
So he owns all that.
Twelve.
And there's a short line piece there, yeah. So about twelve acres.
Who owns the, the trail?
It's on Pacific, it says.
Oh.
They've never donated that to the city. Well, if they own that, we probably have got as good a chance of getting that as Ogden.
I would say if they don't have it in their name.
That's what you do is you take. Then we cut that over there and then we give this over to them.
Yeah.
And as a trade, right?
Yeah.
Oregon Short Line Railroad. And that one is six point five two acres.
That's, that's that A Avenue.
Oh, that's, that's this whole thing right here. Yeah, that's not gonna work. That's not gonna work. We might could get that sliver.
That may be something to think about.
Yeah. Point is, if we're getting ready to buy that other piece, this might be something we wanna talk about now.
Well, that's.
Now you gotta.
I think we, I think we need to make a determination.
You know, oh, duplicate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, before we gave three million over there.
I suspect three million is violent for me.
I'm thinking of what?
Compound.
Especially if we come in here, the fact they're gonna put a bridge over there and totally lock him out.
Cape Cod.
Yeah, once he comes to realize that.
Yeah.
Cape Largo.
That's not a bad idea.
I like that.
Just out of the safe. Hey, thank you for your time. What can I do for you guys?
You know, that'd be great. Right up there to the line. You can start busting, you could start bringing in prisoners with the train, just like they did back in.
We putting them on a train or making them walk?
Well, the one, never mind.
I bet I can't say. That is being recorded. That's it, nobody might be watching. That'd be great. We wanna change this meeting to every other week.
Yeah, I've already taken care of that, Christie. This is the, I think the next one starts in two weeks from now with the but, because it's Labor Day, it's moved to a Thursday, then we're on track. Yeah, I agree, that's good, that's good.
Good. Well.
Okay, good.
I'll call Claude.
I got a health department meeting.
Appreciate it.
I'm glad you represented us there, Dave, thanks so much.
You wanna move over there with your friends?
You know what, I already did my time, thank you so much, though.
He did his damn.
I'm thinking next year.
I was very effective, by the way. I got a lot of good things done when I was over there, good things.
All right, Sheriff, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
I do have a couple things to talk to you guys about.
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh.
Stand session?
Are you closed?
Yeah, uh, we can stay a session.
Okay.
Well, okay, motion to adjourn?
Well, that's him.
Second.
All fair and sound.
I.
Okay, everybody, we're adjourned, see ya.
I don't think anybody's there, bud. So does.
I knew you'd get there, I just had to wait two or three minutes.
Just take, just take a second.